Welcome everyone to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2017. I see we do have some special guests walking in right on time. Welcome. But I would like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. We did meet at 5:30 in a special meeting to interview an applicant for the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and we will be addressing that issue later in our agenda. But I'd invite Town Clerk to call roll, please.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Doran?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dornbecker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Before we move on to the rest of our agenda, I do want to recognize that the Yountville community lost a longtime resident recently who passed away, Ray Monte, 93 years old. And Ray was a very longtime resident, moved to Yountville in 1951, and among other things was an owner of Vintage 1870 back when it was the Grosinger Winery. It was very instrumental in helping the town of Yountville become what it is today. So we wanted to please invite everyone to remember Ray with a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please join us now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is adoption of tonight's agenda, and we do have one change to that agenda. At the request of the applicant, item, let's see, item 11A, home occupation use permit request for 6887 Jefferson Street, the applicant has requested that be withdrawn and re-agendized for a later meeting. So we will pull that item from tonight's agenda. I believe that's the only change to the agenda.
Yes.
With that, is there a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we're using our electronic voting here, so we'll leave the dramatic pause here. Please vote. So we got through the agenda, 5-0. Now roll. Next up, this is fun. We have some special guests with us in the audience this evening, and I'm going to present a proclamation on behalf of the Town Council recognizing Be Kind Napa Day. And I'd like to invite Tallulah and Ruby Finkelstein to join me, and actually if Judd and Holly would like to join, or if it's just the girls for now, whatever you'd like to do, join me over here at the podium.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm John.
Lower the podium.
So I'm going to read a proclamation, and I think that you just received something from the city of Napa just this afternoon, is that right? So you're getting pretty familiar with this process. See what happens when you have a really good idea and you tell everybody about it? So this is a proclamation recognizing Be Kind Napa Day in the town of Yountville. Whereas, Napa residents, Tallulah and Ruby Finkelstein, with the help of their parents, Judd and Holly, organized the inaugural Be Kind Napa Day to be held on Saturday, July 29th, 2017, in the town of Yountville. Whereas, the idea for Be Kind Napa Day was inspired by a family friend, Lori Phillips of New York City. Ms. Phillips noticed how often her fellow New Yorkers were isolated and did not interact as a community. As a way to break the ice, she made Be Kind buttons and would wear them while out and about in New York. When someone would compliment her button, she would take it off and gift it to that person. A friendly conversation would start naturally and smiles would ensue. The buttons would then be paid forward by their new owners and are now found all over New York. Whereas, on a recent visit to New York, nine-year-old Tallulah, and raise your hand, so everybody knows which one's which.
She's ten.
Oh, ten-year-old. Oh, congratulations. They're growing up so fast these days. And seven-year-old still? Okay. Ruby. Were impressed by these friendly interactions, so they decided to spread kindness in Napa and ordered some of the same Be Kind buttons. Now they wear Be Kind buttons everywhere they go and give them to those that comment on them. People all over Napa Valley are wearing the Be Kind buttons and spreading kindness. Whereas, Be Kind Napa Day kicks off with a kindness walk in the town of Yountville, the heart of the Napa Valley. After receiving Be Kind buttons, walkers will proceed through Yountville on the way to a Be Kind celebration at the Napa Valley Museum, on the grounds of the California Veterans Home, where they will enjoy ice cream, cookies, and family-friendly activities. Whereas, Be Kind Napa Day is a kid-driven and kid-led event that brings people together to spread friendship and community spirit. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, on behalf of the Yountville community, recognize the efforts by Tallulah and Ruby to create a greater sense of community and kindness throughout the Napa Valley, and encourage everyone to embrace this positive spirit and support Be Kind Napa Day. So with that, congratulations. Congratulations. Let's just move this way so we don't block. Where are you going? Don't go anywhere. Would either of you or both of you like to say anything? Tell us a little more about it. Here, let's do this.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the city of Yountville for all of the support and stuff. I'd just like to thank everyone and for hosting us for this event.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And it looks like you might have some gifts to pass out.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
That's very cute.
I got mine already.
Hey, watch your step, too.
Thank you.
I'm going to wear mine right now.
Me, too, right under mine.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the whole family and friends that are in the audience tonight. We really appreciate your effort and look forward to walking with you Saturday morning on the 29th.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You had us at ice cream, I think.
Event organizer couple.
Right. Wise beyond their years.
If you did not get a pin today, come to the event and you will get one. And thank you so much for all of your support and for helping to make it happen. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Next up, we do have our public comment item. We're getting one more button delivered. But in the meantime, I invite any member of the public that would like to come up and speak on a matter that's not on the agenda. I see Mr. Van Gorder is here. Welcome.
Thank you, and I'll try and keep within the time limit, and if you'd like, I can certainly go slightly over if I'm missing any questions. Just thinking about your comment about how fast young people grow up, and it won't be long before they can be running for elected office. I like the idea of having people that like Be Kind buttons as elected officials. My name is Mark Van Gorder. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and Manager Rogers, council members, for your time this evening. I represent Pacific Gas and Electric for Government Relations, and I'm here tonight to try and answer some of the questions that have come up recently with regard to outages in the south part of town. As I mentioned, there have been a number of questions. Each question generates a somewhat lengthy answer, and I'll try and go through these quickly, and if you'd like, I can answer them. Let me just read some of the questions, some of the answers, and we'll go through there. One of the questions, how many outages have affected Rancho de Napa and Gateway communities and south of town? Because there are other businesses and other residents in that area that have been affected, but the questions have generally come from those neighborhoods. And in the last year, I understand that there's been more, but in the last year we've had four outages. And those two recent outages, if I recall correctly, was July 7th and June 18th, were out for several hours, roughly almost four hours the first time and four and a half hours the second time. There were two other outages that were much shorter. We would call them momentary or very brief outages, and they can be from various events. The two recent ones were related to heat events and strong demand for the electric use that day. Why is the power out one part of the town and not another? I was trying to get one of our electrical supervisors to come and attend the meeting tonight. He was unable, but we will try and have someone come and meet with the managers of those neighborhoods as well as customers. But the written answer that I received is, in layperson's terms, is that we have switches. There's a way to switch or route electricity through the town, and so they can feed parts of the town and reroute electricity to serve parts of the town. But there's always an end point at which the equipment has failed, and that has been in these last few cases in that part of town. Does PG&E know that we are not one customer? The two communities that have been impacted recently, Rancho de Napa and Gateway, have what we call a master meter. So there's a main meter that the residents are served off of, and in our system, it's true, that will show up as one meter. But we know that in Yountville, that does not mean one customer. I have heard some folks say that they've called our 1-800 number, which is, for anybody who doesn't know, is 743-5000. If you call that number and you're reporting an outage, or you have other questions related to your electricity use, please make sure to let people know that you are calling as a customer from a master meter at that address. Someone may see one meter, but if you say no, we're on a master meter, and we have 200 homes that are served from that meter, or something of that nature, that will alert folks at our call center who may not know. Locally, whether it's in the Napa office or in our San Rafael office, we're aware, I'm aware, that there are many hundred people that are served from these two meters, and we consider them a priority when we see that there's an outage. So what's causing the outage, and what is PG&E doing to increase the reliability in this area? The outages on June 18th and July 7th were due to high demand on the system during extremely hot days. Both outages were caused by a blown fuse. The fuses did what they were designed to do, to protect the electrical equipment from damage, similar to circuit breakers, the way they work in homes. Our engineering and operations teams are looking at ways to reliably serve the higher demand in this part of town. They're looking to see what kind of equipment may be needed, and if there's multiple locations where more than just one piece of equipment may be needed. Analysis will include frequency, duration, and cause of the power outages, as well as the demand for electricity. And as far as how long until the repairs, which a permanent solution will be made, when the engineering and operation teams have a reliability improvement plan in place, we can better answer the questions as to the type of equipment we install and replace, and how long it will take. But we are taking a look at it. It is a very big priority for us to find out what's causing it, multiple locations, and get an answer back, and maintain communications throughout that process. So there isn't a long delay without answer, and people just feel like we're not working on it. Are responding crews, PG&E aware of the ongoing outages and what the failing equipment should be checked first prior to patrolling the cause of the outages? So yes, they're aware of it. As I mentioned, they're due to blown fuses. But before we can close or open a fuse or perform any work to restore power, we have to patrol the line to make sure that something that caused that, like Mylar balloons, or a tree branch, or some other thing, a wire may be down that we're not aware of, before switching the electricity back on, we have to patrol the length of the line that may be impacted, to make sure that when we make it live, it's safe. And so sometimes, we know what the problem is likely caused, we have to go back before we re-energize and make sure that we're not creating a more dangerous situation by re-energizing a line that may be down. That, you know, there's a longer answer that goes into our restoration process. The quick summary is usually with smart meter now, as soon as the power is lost, we are notified from the smart meters instantaneously. It used to be that we would have a phone call from one or two people, and it could take a while before people would let us know the power's out. Now we know almost instantaneously. We have crews that are generally available, and power can be restored within a half an hour to an hour, given the location of our crew. If some of our crew live here in Napa, and they may be very close. Power can be out for a much greater period of time, especially during some of the storms that we've seen this winter. So when we have storms that go from Eureka down to San Luis Obispo, and they're impacting hundreds of thousands of customers, our crew's responding as fast as they can to each and every outage. And I would suggest that residents may need to prepare for outages of up to 24 hours, especially during, you know, wind and rain events. Summertime heat, not so much. Last question was, will PG&E customer relations meet with residents and managers with an update on the equipment repair and replacement progress? Yes, we have an operations specialist. His name is Brian Swanson, and he is available to meet with the managers. I believe he's got their contact information and will be reaching out to schedule a meeting and appointment. Those are the questions that I had received and prepared answers to. I'm here to respond to any question you may have, Mayor, or we will also respond to the manager and the residents.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you're here and answering some of those questions. We have to be careful about, because we're in a public comment setting and we don't have this agendized, to get into too much dialogue. So I'm not sure if either Steve or Gary can, you know, let me know if we're even able to ask any questions at this point, or we need to just rely on getting further information to staff that we can disseminate to our residents.
I think it's best to have further information through staff, although a brief comment from one or more of you probably would be okay.
Okay, so let's make sure that everyone understands that a brief comment doesn't mean anything more than a brief comment. Councilmember Mueller?
I would just like to request, maybe just give a little more information. You said that in one of the earlier questions that you addressed, that it was a switching issue. There's a lot of misconception that somebody is actually, the town, flipping a switch. If you could just address that in a little more clarity for people.
Yeah, and I, yes, thank you for that. The town does not have a switch. PG&E does not switch power to divert it away from, unless there is a safety concern, and in which case, if there's a safety concern and we need to de-energize a line, we will turn off power to parts of the town. But our objective is to turn as much power on and keep as many people with power going while we come and work to restore. PG&E does not communicate nor take direction from the town. What power to restore, what switches to throw to provide power, we do appreciate, and I'd like to extend my thanks and appreciation to a number of folks who, you know, have spent evenings and weekend time responding to some of the outage that we've had to repair and respond to, and opening up cooling centers. But I've had communications from the town manager, and the Public Works Director, from council members, and Mayor Dunbar. So all of that information generally comes to me as your emergency liaison, and we try to use that to get power restored as quickly as possible. But there, to the switch, we use it to restore power and to make situations safe.
Any other very specific question or comment? I just wanted, you know, so thank you for coming in and giving some clarification. I know that one of the challenges that we have faced is misinformation that gets shared, and it's understandable that people hear one story that may or may not be accurate, and it gets spread fairly quickly when people are in a difficult, uncomfortable situation without power on a very, very hot day.
Yep.
The fact that it happens in a certain part of town, people sometimes forget, we, you know, we have businesses, a hotel, a church, that are also affected, and the town is very concerned about making sure that all of the folks involved in those properties are safe and can operate their businesses. You know, we lost, there was substantial revenue lost in our businesses that were affected, so this is a high priority for staff. I know I want to thank Samantha and Joe for responding immediately to get cooling stations identified at the community center and allowing people to go there if they needed to. So our staff is always available to respond when we need to. So with that, again, thank you. You'll probably be hearing some more questions from council and staff and residents, and we appreciate in advance that you'll respond with answers and follow up with us regarding the equipment, the status of the equipment, and what does need to change. It looks like there certainly is something that can be considered, so.
And if it, it may help to clarify my role, just so that people may wonder, well, my role is to work with local government, council members, elected official staff. We have another person who responds to media questions. We have a person who responds to customer questions and works directly with the managers of the parks. We will make sure that everyone is connected as they should be and provide answers, you know, on a regular cadence, so that people know that we are continuing to maintain focus.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, you have a...
I had just one last question for you, and that is, when will Mr. Swanson be available to meet with the people at Rancho de Napa and Gateway?
Without appearing evasive, I don't have his schedule, but I did talk with him as recently as today, and I know that it's a priority for him to schedule that meeting. And it will be dependent upon the manager's availability, so we're trying to make it...
You can keep us in the loop on that. Thank you.
Yes, I will do that. And thank you for the opportunity to let you know what the update is.
And I also appreciate that you have been sending out proactively, as we are approaching either storm conditions or extended heat conditions, information to our staff and to all of us about contact information and what we should be aware of. So look forward to having those continued.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the public that would like to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no others, we'll move ahead to our next item, which is our consent calendar. The consideration of consent calendar items A through E. Is there a motion to accept, or is there any discussion? Is there a second?
A second.
As the screen comes up, please cast your vote, or do we not have it?
Say all in faith, ask us to vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No, that passes unanimously.
I did something different.
You already had us unanimously approving that. That's good.
It's going to read our minds.
Let's see if we're going to approve the Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report next. That's the... Yes, we'll move ahead now to our first of a few... Where'd my list go? We'll go on this. We're going to go to our presentation, which is the, as I said, Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. We'll start there. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Jeff Belli. I'm a newly promoted division chief for the Cal Fire Nap County Fire Department. My position is to oversee the daily operations of the department. So I'm here on behalf of Jason Martin, who's the local battalion chief that oversees the Yountville station.
Welcome.
So, thank you for having me. So for the quarter, the Yountville station here responded to 482 calls, of which 343 were medical aids, which is pretty much the overwhelming majority, and that's truly the trend nationwide for the fire service. 23 public assists, 38 traffic collisions, a vehicle fire, 41 fire alarms, 12 structure fires, three vegetation fires, seven hazardous conditions, and 13 power line or tree hazard calls. Of the 482 calls, 92 calls were within the town of Yountville, 225 calls were at the Veterans Home, 159 calls were within the county area that the station protects, and six calls were mutual aid calls to the city of Napa. Significant events were, of those six calls that we assisted the Napa Fire Department with, three of them were structure fires. And then also, the members of the station participated in the mixed-nuts softball team in game with the residents of the Yountville Veterans Home. We attended a memorial service for a longtime volunteer fire chief in the county who passed away. And then we also, the engine crew and the truck crew also participated in both the Easter egg hunt and the movie night at the park. For training with the public, we, the folks, the guys and gals at the station put on a fire extinguisher class at Cakebread Winery. They taught a hand-only CPR class to the public at the Old Health Fair on Bella Oaks Lane. And then also, they participated, helped instruct a live-fire structure training drill for both the, for all the fire agencies within the county of Napa on Raggett's Lane. And that concludes this quarterly report. If there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions to the report? Yes, Councilmember Doran.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you, a bit of a story from our neighborhood. One of our neighbors took your CPR course, and her husband had a heart attack in their kitchen, and she was able to keep him with us until the emergency vehicles could come. So it really is a great service, and thank you so much.
Yes, and we would love to do more if the public would like. That's the intent. We want to have more situations just like that, because whether it's partnering with the community or the residents there, helping to make a difference in someone's life. So absolutely never hesitate to contact the station. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, very much for the report. Sergeant Hallman is up with the Sheriff's Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome.
So I'm Sergeant John Hallman with the Napa County Sheriff's Office, and I bumped into one of those lovely young ladies and got my Be Kind. So, kind of fun. I'll be out on the walk. I love the story, by the way, on the CPR and how that comes back. That's excellent. So this quarter, we, I'll have my clicker if you don't mind clicking for me when we need it. Our calls for service went up over 250 for the quarter compared to last year. So we're around 1,145 calls for service for the quarter. And being the time of year, I like to typically look at the same time of year, because depending on the time of year, whether it's hot or cold, that changes our calls for service and the type of things we're dealing with. So I was really pleasantly surprised to, when I go back and looked at the statistics of what we're doing, that the crimes against persons decreased. We had a decrease in assaults. We did increase pedestrian and vehicle checks. We had one rape that was completely later unsubstantiated, just to kind of let the wind out of that, because sometimes we all hear that word, and it's a little shocking, but it was completely unsubstantiated with the victim. And especially when it gets hot, it's not uncommon to see trends because of heat, agitation, alcohol use, that sometimes crimes against persons, even maybe somebody shoving someone else a common battery assault can go up. And they didn't. They went down. I like to think that some of that is our presence and getting out and contacting people and just chatting with people, hopefully. Crimes against property, there was slight decrease in thefts. We had no residential burglaries. You see the smiley face there. That always makes me happy. For years, I've always said that there's a lot of upsetting crimes, but if someone tries to come into my home, even just to steal the simplest thing and make my family feel unsafe, that's a huge deal to me. So I know it's a really big deal to the residents, and we take it seriously. Grand and petty theft, they were about the same as last quarter, but I will say... Grand and petty theft, they were about the same as last quarter, but I will say some of those were not, also not substantiated, there were claims, I won't get too far into that. So if we can go to the next slide. Traffic collisions decreased from seven for the quarter to four. Our traffic stops, we increased traffic stops from 104 for the same quarter of 2016 to 308 for this quarter. So we almost tripled the traffic stops. Traffic citations were increased from 29 for the quarter of 2016 to 95 in 2017. And so I kind of went like this across my brow when I did the math and said, oh, okay, we are actually keeping a two-third education, one-third, maybe just a little less than one-third enforcement, you know, philosophy as a law enforcement agency. And that's, that's the goal, is really just to get people to understand what's going on and give voluntary compliance, as I think we all know. So if I can get the next slide. Some things we've done, we did coffee with the cops and it's kind of funny because getting deputies to get out there, plan something like this, and talk is not our normal function, but I love it because as soon as they do it, I've kind of got, I've set the hook. Because you get to build relationships and you find out what matters to the people that you serve and you kind of have a good time. I know Rancho de Napa, there was a lot of laughter, it might have been at our expense, but there was a lot of laughter.
(laughing).
We came in, we supplied the donuts and so a couple of deputies coming in with large pink boxes of donuts was more than everyone could take, everyone had to laugh. We'll have more to come, we're going to mix it up this next month and put some like Friday night and make sure that we're crossing different times and days so people can make it when they're off, if they didn't make other ones. But that will be an ongoing thing as long as the residents like that. We're working, I didn't put it on there, but we're also working pretty heavily with the Veterans Home and their public safety and some of the parking enforcement, some of their protocols, we're trying to help them to become more standalone and support them where they need it, but get them in a position where they can do more of their own enforcement. So, and we have a great relationship, so that's going well. So something I just kind of wanted to do is kind of a public service announcement and ask for help for people that will watch this later, just talking about the dogs in Yountville. This last quarter, we all love pets, you'll, if you're following me around with a camera, you're going to see me getting out of my car, petting people's dogs and loving on their pets. But at the same time, so in the town, we have an ordinance that mandates dogs will be on leashes in public places. This last quarter, for the last three months, we've had two dog biting human incidents and a couple of dog fights, two or three dog fights that were caused, all of these caused by dogs off-leash. So if we can get the next slide, see how I even make the motion as if I had it. Sheriff's deputies have given numerous warnings and a few citations for dogs off-leash. Dogs off-leash in public may pose a significant risk and/or cause fear, anxiety to other citizens. And I'm just asking, you know, please leash your dogs in public places, it respects and protects other citizens and your pet. You know, we'd like to know, we'd like to think that we know everything about our pet and the reality is, is circumstances change and we don't always know how they're going to react based on how we feel or how the other person might feel that they're interacting with, or maybe someone else's pet. So if you'll switch to the next slide, this is my favorite. Dogs in Yountville, which dog might bite someone? You just don't know and neither do other people. And the big point is that dogs, you know, typically it runs down the leash. If I am anxious, my dog will feel it. And I have all kinds of pets, I love dogs, but they will feel, or like if I'm walking my dog and my wife is, my dog acts differently based on what they're feeling. If they're feeling, if she's anxious maybe about another dog that's in the park, the dog will feel it and react accordingly. So just out of respect for the other residents, for the people that visit our town, for other dog owners and for our dogs, if they're on a lead, we're less likely to have problems and definitely less likely to have vet bills or somebody injured. So I would just ask everyone to be real cognizant of that. We're going to be working on further education and talking to more people about that and trying to get compliance. So that's the attempt. If there's some direction that could be given, I'm welcome to it, but otherwise, that's the direction we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can click away from the, thank you.
Any questions to the report? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Sergeant. Next up, Nathan, I believe, is going to present, Envision Yountville General Plan Update.
This is the planning quarterly report.
I was going to say, we took away your table.
It's like a size saddle.
That's just fine, you know, you just need to see my shoulders anyway, so it's good. This is going to be a two-part presentation, I'll, to kind of introduce it and then Sandra's going to talk about the second part of it. But this is really an update to focus on the Envision Yountville effort, this townwide effort that's going to culminate in a total update, a comprehensive update to the town's general plan. And tonight, it's just going to be a quick update of what has happened so far and what is still to come. So the effort really consists of three phases or parts. Phase one is education, phase two is drafting, and then phase three is the review and adoption of the general plan. And the Envision Yountville effort officially launched with the first phase in January of this year of 2017, and that included the launch of a website, envisionyountville.com. This website is really just the coolest database of everything you'd need if you're obsessed with general plans in Yountville. It contains a database of news, a calendar of upcoming events, a huge project library that includes previous versions of the general plan, other policy documents, both for the Yountville community as well as regional for the whole Napa community, as well as contact information for all of the key personnel that are tied to the project. Also, launching in this first phase of Envision Yountville was the popular speaker series. The first session of the speaker series was held on February 16th in just a packed community center. And the topic for the session was just an overall introduction to general plans, what they are, and to Envision Yountville, where they're able to meet some of the professional team that's helping us with this effort. And then following that first session were more focused sessions in March and April related to circulation in town, the resident business community relationship and the agricultural preserve. And then the speaker series final session was on May 18th with focus mainly on the importance of community character. And videos and write-ups of every single one of these events is on the Envision Yountville website where if anyone missed it, they can go and get a good recap of it. There's copies to the articles that were written in The Sun, they're on the website, as well as just actual videos of the events themselves. Now, on March 16th, after two of those speaker series sessions occurred, the recruitment for the Town Advisory Group began. The recruitment ended on April 14th and with a total of 31 applications received. And after several days of interviews, a total of 22 applicants were interviewed after nine withdrew. After all those interviews occurred, the TAG, for those short on time, was formed with the following members: Joel Bradigan, Verlin Chalmers, Boyd Dennington, Liz Howar, Carl Johnson, Eric Knight, Whitney, Diver McAvoy, Davio Santos, Susan Wickers, and then PJ Hudson and Lynn Peña as alternate members. That, really with the final speaker series session ending and then the creation of this Town Advisory Group, that marked the end of phase one, that ended A New Hope, now we're into Empire. And phase two started just last week and Sandra's going to talk more about that with more Star Wars references.
Right, so I'll share that we have moved into phase two and that started with the first meeting of the Town Advisory Group last week. And this next phase will run from now until about March, April, or May, it depends on the work schedule and the concepts that are before the TAG and the council. But it consists of the TAG meetings, it will consist of several public workshops, there will be public outreach to groups in town to share the work of the TAG and the council, and then there will be the council work sessions. And the goal of this next phase is to come up with that draft general plan. So the TAG meets on a monthly basis and their first meeting was this last week and they had a chance to meet the Envision Yountville Project Team, the host of consultants, and they received draft copies of the workbook. And that workbook is a document that documents existing conditions in Yountville and trends and identifies questions and ideas to talk about, the ideas to spark discussion as we move forward, not just amongst the TAG but amongst the public and the council. We are, we went to publication of that document this week and it'll be a glossy booklet with pages for notes and ideas and so it's really going to be a working document that helps guide the effort. They also heard from our environmental consultant about the process moving forward and what's necessary and what their work is in drafting the existing conditions reports. And we passed out the first homework assignment because this next month, we get started on the real work. And the first topics are safety and noise. And the way we're approaching it is that staff with the consultant team has come up with a matrix for each of the elements and we've identified all of the policies from the '92 general plan and we've shared the implementation efforts as to whether there was an ordinance drafted, a policy or a program in place and whether those were successful or not. We've made recommendations whether to retain, revise, or delete those programs and we've included a host of additional new programs or policies because the general plan in 1992 didn't hit on really all elements. So that is one document that they'll have a month to review and we're also sharing copies of the existing conditions reports. And these are useful because it'll be a reference document that is really deep on the technical facts and statistics for the initial, for the environmental impact report. It has noise contours and existing DBA and so it's a reference when we're talking about noise and other items. So the goal next month is to jump in and start talking about those issues. Also, in August, we'll hold our first workshop and it's more of an introduction to really get the pulse of the community as to what they think the big topics are and what their areas of interest are. We'll have click polling and other items, hopefully to make it fun and interesting, so they'll come to other workshops. The next one after August will occur in October and it's really probably the biggest workshop that we'll have, it'll address land use issues and probably the one that's of most interest to the community. So we'll continue to hold public outreach workshops, these work sessions and come, come early spring, hopefully we'll have a draft where we can then move into the next phase of the project. I did want to mention that TAG meeting agendas are posted online on the Envision Yountville webpage. We're also recording the audio so the public can go back and listen to what's being discussed in these meetings and we're excited.
One last thing just to add, all these documents we just talked about, including the workbook, it's all going to be on that Envision Yountville website. There's a whole tab for project library where there is every document under the sun that you can think of, both historical and these working ones that we've discussed.
We're starting to get a sense for why it takes 25 years for people to do a general plan update.
You want to do this every week?
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilor Dorman?
Thank you. Did you record audio on the first TAG meeting?
We did.
Okay, and is that on the website?
It will be soon.
Okay.
We will, we will make sure that once it is posted, we'll notify the council.
Thank you.
Is there a sense of how long after these meetings there would be recordings or minutes or anything like that for folks? The tendency would be to think that immediately after a meeting, it's all available online, but what's a realistic timeline? Are we talking a week, a couple weeks, or is it hard to know yet?
It's hard to know since we've just had one meeting, but I'd say that week timeframe is the most realistic because you need a little time to make sure that the audio quality is where you want, so you can publish it first.
And certainly before the next meeting, people would have the opportunity to review the previous meeting, that would be a goal.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, can you tell me the date of the next meeting in August? And also, I think you, Sandra, told me that it's a recurring every third Thursday, is that correct?
The TAG meets the second Thursday of each month.
Second Thursday.
Except for December, we'll take December off. And the first workshop is August 24th.
But the August meeting will be the second Thursday?
Yes.
So August 10th.
Thank you.
And a reminder for folks that are paying attention to the TAG meetings, the council's not going to attend those and that's intentional so that there can be an open and candid dialogue amongst the residents on that committee, just so there's no influence from us until we go to the public meetings and we can all participate equally. Were you going to share anything else, Sandra?
I was just going to share the time for the workshop, it'll be 6 to 8 in the evening.
In this room.
In this room. Okay. And that'll be noticed as it gets closer.
Yes.
Everywhere.
Our goal is to really get the information out there, so as many people as possible attend.
And we also are counting on the members of the committee to let their friends and neighbors know also. Great. Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll thank you very much for the update and move on to our next update, which is the Integrated Pest Management Program update. Mr. Tagliabashi from the back to the front.
Story of my life. Thank you, Michelle. We're still getting used to practicing the change, so trying to do it as orderly as possible. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure this evening to discuss our Integrated Pest Management Program, also known as the IPM. The last time that we discussed this particular subject, actually before this year, was in 2011 and was with P-RAC. So I don't believe that this discussion has been before this body in quite some time, so I think it's important that we update everyone on how we're doing and what we're doing with the pest management policy and practice. This discussion was really driven by the questions and concerns regarding our Integrated Pest Management Program and how we conduct and analyze and try to capture the existing policy and process that the field staff uses to evaluate the methods, use the control pests, including our weeds and non-native species. I think it seems beneficial because it's been quite some time to walk the council through some basic information on pesticides and how it's used and then how we use it. So, what's the easiest way to click through here? Oh, there we go. All right, here we go.
The screen behind you just went out.
Thank you.
All right. So pesticide use is a highly regulated by the federal, state, and at the federal, state, and local levels. Any applicator who uses pesticides commercially or on public property is required to be certified and have an additional 20 hours of extended education every two years to maintain their license. Pesticides are categorized as restricted use, unclassified, and general use. All commercial and public agencies using pesticides must register with the Napa County Ag Commissioner and each licensed applicator must also register. These records, use records are submitted to the county ag commissioner's office each month with a summary of the pesticide used and specific information related to the need for conditions of, and the follow-up. Those reports are used to closely track and monitor overall throughout the county, the use of pesticides. I think it's important to note that their standard label makes it clear to users what level of caution to use and there are four categories of labeling. So top category one is danger, poison, it's marked with a skull and crossbones. It is the most dangerous chemical and I think it's also important to note that when these chemicals are tested, the level of labeling reflects what the one route of entry would be that causes the most danger. So even though some of the other routes of entry may be less dangerous, if one of the routes of entry indicate any of these four categories and then it is used at the highest category. So category number two is danger, category three is a warning, it's moderately dangerous, and category four is caution, the lowest danger. So I think it's really important to note that Yountville, the town, only uses category four caution pesticides and herbicides as a part of our IPM. I think it's also important to discuss the signal words a little bit more. So caution is a slightly toxic if eaten, it can be absorbed through the skin, it can be inhaled and it can cause slight eye irritation. So that's the type of products that we currently use. The next category above that, warning, would be moderately toxic if eaten, it can also be absorbed through the skin, inhaled, and could cause moderate skin or eye irritation if it's contacted with either of those two. Danger is the- Danger is the highest one that we talked about earlier. It's highly toxic by at least one route of exposure. It's corrosive, it causes irreversible damage to the skin or eyes, and it may be highly toxic if eaten, absorbed through the skin, or inhaled, and it is labeled as a poison. I think it's also important to note that the dose makes the poison in any of these products that we're talking about, and I think there's been a lot of discussion, in particular about one of the products that's used pretty widely, glyphosate or Roundup, commonly known as Roundup, in the European Union, that has just recently been placed on the list two-way as a carcinogenic. I think, to put that in perspective, other items on that list are nighttime work, sunlight, and aspirin. So those three products included on that same two-way list of scheduled items of cancer-causing I think it's also important that we talk about some of the alternative products, because we have had quite a bit of conversation in this community and other communities about other types of materials or items that can be used. The one that's most popular is vinegar. The vinegar that we would use for our pesticide program would come in a twenty-three to twenty-five percent concentration. It's listing as a warning, moderate, or higher product in a signal word. It is acidic acid because of the concentration. The dangers with this product include instant burns to the skin, permanent damage to the lungs, and permanent vision loss with eye contact. Personal protective equipment for our crews would be required, our Tyvek suits, gloves, and full-face respirators that cover both the eyes and the nose, because the mucous membranes are particularly vulnerable to this product. Some people say, well, we can just mix it ourselves at our home, and for home use, that is probably true. I wouldn't recommend that to anyone, but because we are licensed and credentialed, we're not allowed to, by law, to create or mix any of our own solutions. Our current IPM usage. Our policy calls for us to use the least amount of product possible to be effective. In 2011 and 2012, when we talked about this policy and program, we used four products. They were all listed as caution, as we discussed earlier. That is the least amount of toxicity category. It's a total of eight gallons used in 2011 and twelve, and the four products we used were Roundup, Surflon, Turflon, and Styllet Oil. So all use to control weeds, and weeds in broadleaf, non-native vegetation in flowerbeds and in our grassy areas. Our current IPM usage, so as of June of this year, we use two products, Roundup and Surflon. A total usage is 2.95 gallons. Most of this is used in the rideaway. The predominant usage is up in the courtyard areas and along some of the paths, particularly the vine trail path, but also using spot spraying in the parks and other areas as well. I think that we need to talk about the methods of reduction, and why we have achieved this remarkable reduction in use of pesticide. We switched to drip irrigation, and we're using a more native species drought-tolerant landscape. So if you're not watering everywhere, then you're not allowing weeds to grow everywhere. We're also using a lot more mulch, so if the sun can't get to the product, then it's not able to grow weeds or plants. We're doing a lot more hand weeding. We're also using other tools. We have a propane torch that we use to burn some of the weeds in the lawn. It's kind of a all-of-the-above kind of approach in the tools that we use. We want to talk a little bit about how we compare to other green cities. So the city of San Francisco has banned all category one and two chemicals, however, they still use category three and four. The city of Santa Cruz eliminated the use of category one and two chemicals and follows a standard integrated pest management policy, which we've been following since 2009. The city of Davis has banned the use of category one and two pesticides, but still uses categories three and four. They also have applied the basic principles of IPM. Since 2009, Yountville only uses category four, and we have applied the basic principles of integrated pest management since 2009. I think it's important to note that the town of Yountville has been progressive in our practices for sustainable park maintenance practice. The integrated pest management policy for the town, which captures that information, is attached to your staff report. We continue to provide safe, high-quality, well-maintained parks and spaces for our residents and visitors. This can be attributed to our well-trained and dedicated staff and the pride they take in their jobs. We will continue to use the smaller amount of products listed above. They will be used minimally, and with the utmost attention to the weather and the need for the products used per our IPM and town policy. We have made huge strides in the past four years, and we are continuing to move forward. We spend a lot of time researching new and alternative ways of keeping our pests at bay, including the modern products and methods. The process of evaluating our practices assists us in formalizing what we do, as well as showing us areas where we can improve. For example, if you notice in our IPM, we post notices when any pesticide is used in an area where pedestrians travel, or that is accessible to the general public, even though it's not required as a normal part of the use of the pesticide. We will continue to refine our use of all pesticides and use the least amount of product to be effective per our IPM program and policy. That concludes my presentation. We also have Greg Clark here from the county ag. If you have any further questions of myself, or if you'd like to ask some questions of Greg, we're happy to answer them.
I have any questions of Mr. Tagliabashi's report, and then I'll invite our ag commissioner up to make a comment. Councilmember Mueller?
So, Joe, how many, say in a month, phone calls do you get with questions about herbicides and pesticides that we might be using?
So, that's a pretty good question. It seems to run seasonally, and I would say, honestly, half a handful. We see such stuff on social media much more than we have people call, asking us. Occasionally, when we have the signs out, we'll have someone call and ask what we're spraying and when we sprayed it, and we go through a little bit of explanation, but I would say half a handful, probably, and it's really seasonal. So around February or March, we tend to get those questions, when the flowers and stuff starts popping up, and people kind of want to know what we're doing, and kind of want to relate to us what they're doing.
All right, thanks.
Vice Mayor, question?
Yeah, Joe, I'd like you to solve a conflicting information for me, because I read through all of the reports, and in the text sheet that was provided, it said it's not a problem if it goes into the groundwater, but on Monsanto's own text sheet, it says that it minimized use of the water to prevent environmental contamination, keep out of drain sewers, ditches, and waterways. So that seems to me conflicting information, because the groundwater, you know, how important we are looking at water these days. Roundup, in addition, I do have a personal observation, and that is that during the birding season, when the baby birds are born, they are not capable of, if they're adult birds, and someone sprays Roundup close to them, they can survive that, but I have had it happen in my own garden. We have a bluebird house, and two years ago, five baby birds perished in the house, in the birdhouse, the day after it was sprayed in our neighborhood. Now, that was our homeowners' association, that wasn't the town, but still, it concerns me that, you know, if Monsanto itself admits to the environmental contamination, that the runoff that we are creating by using it is contaminating water.
Well, I can only speak to what I know from my own research and use through the staff of this product, and in talks with other professionals who use it. So the one remarkable thing about Roundup in particular is it binds itself very tightly to the soil, so you don't get a lot of runoff into the water and streams and creeks. If they're going to use it in a wet environment, they use a different product that has the same properties as Roundup, but it has a stickier mixture that allows it to hold itself to the plant a little bit longer, so that it doesn't pollute the water and waste the water, creeks, and water sheds. I will also say that while it does, is very effective weed killer, it bonds itself very tightly to the ground, and as it decomposes, it becomes ammonium, and I think the ag commissioner can probably answer this.
Phosphate, probably.
No, it doesn't phosphate. I think it's carbon? It's basically two inert chemicals, so there's, the lab reports that I'm reading, and the text sheets that I provided, really say that it's not at all any more toxic than a lot of other products, and less toxic than most other products, including fish and rats, and the various animals they tested it on. So I can only speak to what I read in the reports, and what I have learned from the professionals, and I think our ag commissioner could probably answer that question a little better than me.
Well, the one bright note, I'm happy to hear that we have reduced to less than three gallons per year.
Yeah, and I would say that, not saying anything about what was used around your home, but a lot of times they use things, products besides Roundup, and those products also contribute to the Roundup myth, and so sometimes those two get mixed together, and maybe that was the case with what was sprayed around your home, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Sorry, other questions of the report? One question I have that I've heard, especially when we see the postings around neighborhood parks, is the dangers that might be present for dogs as people walk through those parks. You're identifying on those signs when there is a spray, and also when to basically avoid the area. Is that type of information readily available there?
Yeah, we do post those. It's not required per the product or the product manufacturer. We post them as a courtesy, because I think people want to know. And again, based on the product toxicology and the SCS, the safety data sheet, most animals, if they're healthy, are not at risk. However, just to be on the safe side, for spraying, we put it out, and as soon as it's dry, it's completely safe, so we do post when we're spraying, just to be cautious.
The other thing that may be considered to a degree inaccurate is when you see a public works crew member out with safety equipment on, I think the assumption is it's poisonous, whatever they're doing, that it's unsafe, and so that is an alarming thing for people to see. Could you maybe address what needs to happen from a, you know, state regulation standpoint, the fact that our crews are out for potentially hours at a time, which is different than the average person passing through?
Yeah, and even with that, Mayor, and thank you for bringing that up, we aren't required to wear that level of protection. We do it as an extra caution, because at times those people go home, and we just don't want to, it's just easier to take off that protective layer and dispose of it properly than to continue to wear the clothes. We're not spraying it at any level near where it would be required to wear that kind of protective gear. We just do it as an abundance of caution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And since we do have our special guest, the ag commissioner, Mr. Clark here, I'm not going to let you get away with not speaking. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, council members, town council members. I don't know why I said that, but I did. Greg Clark, Napa County Agricultural Commissioner. First, what I would like to do is acknowledge the town of Yountville's commitment to integrated pest management. You know, the basic philosophy is you use the smallest tool to address the problem that you have, and the pesticide use pattern, the pesticide profile that Joe and his crew and the town has adopted is exactly the kind of thing that you want to see. You know, you don't use a sledgehammer to pound, you know, a picture nail on the wall to hang a picture, and so what Joe has identified, not only from the pesticides that he uses, but the mulching, the focus on drip irrigation, the hand weeding, some of these other things are exactly the things that, you know, minimize the footprint of the activities around pest control. The other thing is, I also want to commend Joe and his staff for regularly attending the continuing education workshops that we provide and others. I see Joe and his crew come to those. It demonstrates, not only do they need those continuing education hours, but it also shows me a commitment to staying current on laws and regulations, safe use practices, and a variety of other things. Some of the questions you brought up, it is a certain irony that, you know, there is a glyphosate product that can be applied to aquatic areas. You know, pesticides go through a registration process at the federal and state level to mitigate the risks that those products have, and that's reflected primarily on the pesticide label, that talks about how much you can use, when you can use it, what sites to avoid, things along those lines. Also talks about the safety equipment that an applicator must wear. On top of that, you have state regulations that add another layer of protection, and as, probably no surprise to you, California has a very heavy hand in regulation, and that includes pesticides. And so a lot of that is not only intended to protect the community and the environment, but when it comes to pesticides, the greatest risk is to the person who's handling the concentrate. The material that you pour into the sprayer, let's say, before you add water, that's where the greatest risk of splash into the eyes, or onto the skin, or inhalation, and then addition to the person who's always handling it and applying it. Mayor, you brought up a good point, that when people see people out spraying, whether it's in a vineyard, or in a park, or on a rideaway, they're wearing the moon suit, they're wearing the respirator, the gloves, the goggles, it must be really dangerous. Well, no, that's our regulatory system in California. In some instances, it's on the label, and it's designed to protect the employees, the handler primarily. You know, and again, it's, you know, glyphosate has gotten an awful lot of attention. I wish that I had the half a handful of phone calls that Joe gets, because it is a frequent topic of conversation and interest. At the end of the day, what we recommend is that people follow an integrated pest management program. It isn't just for agriculture, it's not just for municipalities, it is for the homeowner. And so everyone should take an interest in identify the particular weed, pest, problem, and use the least intrusive method to address the problem. It's pretty common sense. The other thing is, as I referred to, their training and their education, it's easy for a homeowner to go to any of a variety of stores and buy the same thing, and not necessarily be as trained or as aware of the environment, the use patterns, all these sensitivities. So, you know, I have great faith, not only in our regulatory system in California as it relates to pesticides, but also to the professionals that you have working for you. So, you know, I really commend the town for making this commitment, having a plan, revisiting it, and making changes as necessary. So, you know, I really thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of the commissioner?
I have none.
Please.
Vice Mayor?
Have you noticed, since the Napa Valley, for example, has become so much more committed to drought-tolerant planting, and, you know, not doing as many lawns, and a lot of people have had their lawns taken away, have you noticed any difference in the pattern of usage of Roundup in the Napa Valley?
Well, it's an interesting system, because what we have are municipalities, government agencies, pest control professionals, and agricultural pesticide users are required to report pesticide use to my office on a monthly basis. There is no information on the sales specifically that go out of big-box stores, hardware stores, nurseries, even department and grocery stores, so there's really no way to know. I can tell you, based on my research, going back to the last five years, looking at the total amount of glyphosate sold in California versus the amount that is reported, so that includes government agencies, farmers, pest control professionals, is, it's a little under half is by that group. So about fifty percent use occurs somewhere else, the other half is accounted for. And the reason why I did multiple years is because someone could say, well, Greg, you made that stuff sitting in a warehouse somewhere, on a shelf, a store shelf, or, you know, because it isn't tracked at the cash register level, it's tracked at the manufacturer when it's produced. So I really don't know. I would imagine with glyphosate's addition to the Prop sixty-five list, there might be some change, but there's over nine hundred chemicals and things on the Prop sixty-five list. It almost becomes kind of ubiquitous that, you know, everything, whether it's UV light, whether it's UV light, valium, Xanax, aspirin, Tylenol, tobacco, marijuana smoke, they're all on the Prop 65 list. So if any of those things make you anxious, give you a headache, if it tires you out, you want caffeine, that's on the Prop 65 list. You know, it's everywhere. But, you know, I make light of it, but it, it, there's a lot of information out there. I personally don't believe that the science is settled. Glyphosate's been on the market for over 40 years. It poses a low risk in terms of the acute exposure. We have no system in the United States that really evaluates the chronic exposure of pesticides when we get into that. And a lot of what we're talking about as it relates to glyphosate and other pesticides has to do with the long-term picture. And so there are efforts to kind of address that and so.
Thank you.
But again, I commend the town and I thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much for visiting us for our meeting. Very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone in the audience have a question or comment about this item? Seeing none. Thank you very much for that, that presentation, Joe.
My pleasure. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Back to the back. Or out the door. I don't know which. Okay. Next up, as a reminder, in case folks joined us after we adopted the agenda, item 11A, the home occupation use permit request for 6887 Jefferson Street was pulled after a request by the applicant for it to be continued to a future meeting. We'll go ahead then to item 11B, which is design review and use permit for Velagio Vineyard. Start with the staff report.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you, design review and use permit amendments for the Velagio Vineyard that's located to the south of the Velagio Hotel. And give me one second here to get this going. All right, jumping back in. So we are discussing the Velagio Vineyard and it's shown here in this overhead. As I mentioned, it's to the south of the Velagio Hotel. And the proposal before you tonight is for both design modifications and a use permit modification. And I'll start with the design. The proposal is for a rustic decomposed granite path that would lead from the Velagio central pathway that runs in a north-south direction to this newly cleared section within the center of the vineyard. Approximately 1,500 square feet of the vineyard rows will be removed for this new open area. And the path, as it comes in from the driveway area, will be lined on either side with fruitless olive trees, with lavender below and with low-level path lights that take you around a newly planted lawn area that would feature a, a fountain on the south side. And the end of each of the vineyard rows would be planted with rose bushes. There are no other structures or buildings proposed for this area and it's really intended as an open use of the space to, to, to capitalize as much on the vineyard environment as possible. Other improvements are shown along the frontage on Washington Street and proposed are the removal of four of the smaller pistachio trees that sit behind the first row on Washington in order to place three eight-by-eight concrete plads, pads for the display of art that would be involved with the town art walk program. And then the applicant proposes to plant Cianosis, a low evergreen ground cover. And it's shown here to the utility boxes, which are across from the ad hoc driveway. But since staff had proposed bringing it to the corner, the applicants have considered that as well. And so this treatment would continue, continue down to the corner for more of a uniform treatment on the, the property frontage. So the, that is the limit of the design changes before you tonight. And the use is really associated with the lawn area at the center of the open area. And it's intended both for, or for hotel programming, for events such as yoga for the guests, or for special events related to hotel use, such as dinners and receptions, potentially weddings and events of that nature, as well as, as wine education as part, and I'll, and I'll discuss that one in more detail. It would be connected with a storefront at the marketplace and this experience would be twofold. It would start in the vineyard where guests are guided on a tour and given a hands-on experience in the vineyard by either a vineyard manager or a winemaker or other staff member. It's intended that these would be by appointment only from March through October and that they would be conducted between 11:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And as I mentioned, they would be, or they would be for small groups of up to 12 people, as I mentioned, by appointment. And then at the conclusion of the hands-on vineyard tour, the parties would move to the marketplace where they would conduct wine tasting and learn more of the education. And that is in an existing space. It's on the rear of the V Marketplace property between the main building and the OTMO building. And also proposed are the special events, as I mentioned, for hotel programming. And these are requested to be conducted year-round, although the applicant anticipates that they would be used between March and October. They don't really have an idea of what level of demand they'll have for use of this space, but it is intended as an additional event venue for the guests for smaller parties of 12 to 80 people, whereas the event pavilion at the V Marketplace is intended for, for larger groups. And the applicant is requesting use of the space from 8:00 PM until 11:00 PM for this purpose. And, and so those describe in general how the applicant would like to use the space. And it is on a parcel that is zoned agricultural and agricultural uses are permitted, but accessory uses that are subordinate and complementary to the main use are also permitted. And our general plan really preserves agricultural zoning for agricultural uses and the intended, those are intended to continue. And then this property is also subject to a, a conservate, or, let me see, it's, I left it here. I passed these out just before the meeting for you, but it's a restrictive covenant that further describes the agricultural uses that this parcel is limited to. And that was related to the development of the Velagio Inn and Spa and a transfer of the development potential from this property to the hotel property. And so this is, this is held in ag, at least for the term of this restrictive covenant. This restrictive covenant is recorded and effective, but it potentially could be changed at any time. So with those three measures in place, the zoning ordinance, the general plan and this restrictive covenant, we evaluated whether these uses were consistent with the uses allowed and we find that they are. The wine education really supports the, the wine use of the property and the events are of an occasional nature and they don't take further vineyard use out of production. So we find that those are consistent. As with any use, we evaluate them in terms of impact. And the applicant, as I mentioned, would like to use the space until 11:00 at night, which is later than our noise ordinance permits for activities that, that produce noise. That's, the hours of the, the noise ordinance are 10:00 PM for the seasonal sort of summertime months and 9:00 PM for the balance of the year. So we've included a condition of approval that those be the closing times rather than 11:00. However, there are difference in group sizes in this space and, you know, a 12-person event is probably not likely to, to result in noise impacts like an 80-person event may. And then the council always has the opportunity to extend those hours, should they wish, with other mitigation measures. We also looked at this use of the space in terms of lighting impacts. And the applicant proposes to install sleeves for poles to hang string lighting for the course of the events. And the string lighting is low outage and it would be partially shielded, as well as the path lighting is shielded. So we don't anticipate a great impact from this use of the light, but we have included a condition that they, it only be used for the course of event and it be removed the next day. We also evaluated parking impacts in the staff report. And when you look at the use of the space for hotel programming and to support guests only in terms of the yoga and the special events, the, the attendees at these events would be hotel guests and it would not be open to the public. So the parking ratios that apply to the project based on the multiplier per room are identified as sufficient to, to meet the demand and we don't anticipate greater parking impacts there. When we look at the wine education, it's associated with an existing storefront at V Marketplace. It's already been calculated as to parking for the use. And there is parking in the V Marketplace parking lot. That parking lot is entitled to a parking reduction based on the shared uses, that uses occur at different times and the sharing nature of the property means it's better able to handle the demand. We think that can accommodate whatever surplus demand there may be for this property. So we believe that both properties are fully parked for the proposed use. However, we are mentioning that they are subject to employee parking management so that we can mon, monitor employees parking on site. And that's half the employees that park on the property. That was already included as a condition when you saw the Velagio lobby come before you, but that condition hasn't been perfected because they haven't moved quickly on that application. So I think that covers the issues that I'd like to present to you tonight. And we are recommending approval with the conditions of approval that are in the, the resolution.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions of the staff report? I'll start. Any questions? Councilor Durham?
With some minimal amount of vines that's being removed, what's the number?
I don't know the number of vines. It's about one and a half. It's about 1,500 square feet.
Okay. And then the pads are going to be ultimately operated by Yountville Arts Commission?
Yes, correct. Placement of the art is selected through that group.
Okay. And then, can you, can you just explain this to me? Agriculture uses, accessory uses, which are subordinate and complementary to the primary use in open space areas are allowed without permit?
Mm-hmm.
In a agricultural zoning?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Roller, any questions? Vice Mayor? So the question I have relates to, well, one clarification, I think I got it out of the staff report. I want to make sure about the ground cover on Washington Street. Did you say that it's been agreed to by the applicant that it would extend, as you recommended, all the way south to the corner and wrap around? So there's continuity on the entire street frontage?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
They decided that on their own before I presented the staff report to them, so it was mutually agreeable.
You were going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. They must have sensed it. The special event times eight to 11, I see you call them out. And the certain months of the year, as you identified, you're recommending 10:00 PM and 9:00 PM based on certain months. Do you, I don't remember seeing anything specific to amplified sound, noise or music as it relates to those times. Is there any condition about amplified sound in this application?
There isn't. We should ask the applicant as to their intent with amplified or acoustic noise. And then we have the opportunity to put a condition.
Okay. We'll be asking about that.
Mayor, if I could, any use of amplified sound does require a secondary amplified sound permit. So there's still an opportunity. They would have to bring it forward on a case-by-case basis and hours in operation. Or if that's an area that you want addressed one way or the other, then I would suggest that you consider a condition. But right now, if they were to have amplified sound, they would need a secondary permit, just like they currently do for the, any other amplified sound activities.
And is the amplified sound cut off 10 o'clock on the rest of the property?
Yes.
10 o'clock?
That's correct.
I wanted to just get that out there. So if, as the applicant's requesting, the council consider an 11:00 PM cutoff, there's the possibility of the amplified sound being cut off at 10:00, the event could continue till 11:00 in theory?
Correct.
Or some other, I mean, if we just, as the town manager identified, if we say it's on a per-permit basis, we can put that condition as well. Okay. Those are my questions for right now. I'll formally open the public hearing, invite the applicant to come forward and make any comments, presentation. It looks like we have some visuals. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. I'm Paige Martin. I'm the landscape architect. I'm from Gervan Associates. May I put up a color rendering?
Sure. If you could just lower that microphone just a little bit when you get back there so we can make sure to hear you well.
So I was going to speak to the, basically the overall design intent and concept. And then Steve DeVino, who's the general manager of Vintage Estates, is going to come and speak to you about programming and use. So basically, the, the design intent here is all about preservation. It's about celebrating the existing vineyard and being able to bring people, guests and visitors to the town of Yountville and to Napa in close to vines. I mean, this is wine country and this is what people come here for. And so we really wanted to celebrate what's already there. There's, it's a 2.7 acre parcel and almost two acres of it is vineyards. And I think there's four varietals out there that are being grown and produced now. And it's, so it's an active vineyard. And so the idea was basically, how can we bring people in close to the vines and be able to give them a space where viticulture education can be explored and learned about? So basically, the, the little tiny piece of 1,500 square feet is nestled within the vineyards. And instead of being a square space, it's rounded on the edges so the vineyards can come in a little bit closer. So you can really feel like you're set within that landscape. And as you know, vines grow up to be about six, five to six feet tall. So when you're in that space, you will really feel like you're embraced by the vines. And so we really wanted the plan to minimize the amount of impact and also use natural materials. So the path is a decomposed granite, stabilized decomposed granite with a metal edge. And so it'll just look like dirt. It'll be the same color as, as the adjacent dirt. And then any proposed planting in there respects the agr, the agricultural nature and the agrarian nature of the landscape. So we have fruitless olives at the entryway. There's just a, a little bosque of four trees to announce the entry. And then along the path are, below the olives is some lavender. And so both of those things are things that would be farmed in Napa Valley. And so we thought that they would be appropriate plants to this area. And then also added to the landscape design was adding roses to the end of each of the vines, vine rose, which is a typical thing that you see throughout the valley. And we thought it could be another part of education because one of the reasons that vineyards do that is roses tend to be a little bit more sensitive than grapes. And so they're the first predictor of powdery mildew or pest or any other kind of thing that would touch the rest of the vines. And so they've always been a way for farmers to be able to kind of keep the pulse of, of what's going on in the vine, in the vineyard. So we've added those to the, each of the end as a part of the viticulture education, but also as a way to embellish the area. Along the side, along Washington, you can enter into the vineyard now along an existing path. And that runs kind of north-south on the east side of the resort road. And so basically, anyone walking along Washington Street can come down a path and then connect in through onto the decomposed granite path. Around the interior part of the, of the lawn, we would, we would do our best to find a really good, I don't want to say drought tolerant lawn because those two things don't- good, I don't want to say drought tolerant lawn because those two things don't always go together, but there are new species of lawn that are less water hungry, and so we would want to use one of those. And then, on the east side of that space is a small water feature, which we have some designs for in your packet. And it is basically agrarian in nature. It looks kind of like an old watering hole, so it's just basically a very simple concrete low fountain that has some copper spouts that drip down into, into a basin. And so, within that interior space, it's really basic and quiet and simple materials. Out along Washington Street, as Sandra has mentioned, we're trying to connect in with the town's art program. And so, we've connected all the way from the resort road all the way down to California Street. We are integrating, at this point, we're proposing three separate places for art to be installed. There's already an existing art piece down on the corner of Washington and California, and we think that three more along that way would really connect you all the way through, as well as a low native, California native drought tolerant ground cover, which is the California seaanothis, which is evergreen, which means it gets, it's nice and green all year long, and then it has nice little purple flowers in the springtime. We're also, as Sandra had mentioned, recommending to remove three of the pistach trees that are in a double row along Washington Street. The Washington Street, street trees along that area are all pistach, and the smaller ones behind the bigger ones are being crowded a little bit. There isn't enough space for them. And so, this would really allow for the art to sit within an area that's a little bit more open, but still shaded by the street trees. And I think that's about it in terms of, in terms of the, of the design. We really wanted to keep it simple and of an agric, agricultural nature. So Steve, do you want to come and talk about?
Before we go to, Steve, let's ask any other, any questions we have specifically about the design.
Okay.
Questions? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. It's a really intriguing project. The three art pads, they're kind of bunched up on the north end, correct?
Right. That's not our proposal at this point. That was what we had, what we had talked about earlier, is that what, that's what we were proposing, but now we're actually, we'd like to lengthen it out and have it be spaced out more evenly between the resort driveway and California Street.
Okay, so, and then, you want to take out four of the existing trees?
The pistach, yep, that are in the second row.
Are there only four in that row?
I believe, I believe so.
Or are there four that you've selected out of more than four in that row?
I think in that area, I think we'd have to study it a little bit further beyond the utility boxes because at this point, what we looked at was that there were four there that were kind of dwarfed by the bigger ones, and that's where we were going to remove them. But I think it's better to keep it open along that area.
So you might be coming back to ask us to remove more trees if you lengthen the art portion?
I suppose that's, yeah, that's a potential. We can also tuck the art in amongst the trees. We were wanting to work with the Art Commission Chair and find out, you know, how many pieces they wanted, and I think there's, you know, there needs to be a back and forth and a collaboration between them and us in terms of their needs and what they're looking for.
Thank you.
I would share that the double row of trees is located more on the northern end and it doesn't extend all the way to the south. And that was part of a street tree planting plan that was in place for this double row that was staggered, was never fully realized or planted, and where it is planted here, they're crowded out by the primary trees on the frontage.
And you can reference the drawing set that shows the row of trees. You can clearly identify four of them on the north of the utility box. So that may have been that the four were identified when you were originally talking about that's where the ground cover would go. It makes sense and it sounds consistent that now that you've determined the continuation of that look goes all the way to the south end, any additional trees that would now follow with the ground cover would be removed, is what it sounds like is likely the plan.
Right. Mayor, council, I would recommend that if we're comfortable with that extension, certainly staff can work with them on the location and balancing of three or four art pads. But I would request that staff be given consideration so that the pistach can all be removed rather than coming back because from, we've all walked that and those trees are crowded out, they're not able to survive and achieve. So if that's something that you're interested in, we would prefer, prefer to move forward with the applicant, work on the spacing, and make sure that you get the treatment, the whole duration from the resort road to California.
There's at least one more south of the.
That's my, there may be two.
Well, but there might be a couple, so that's.
There may be two is what I'm thinking.
Just to clarify that answer.
Thank you.
Councilor Durham, any questions? Councilmember Mueller? No?
Nope.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, please. Thank you very much for the presentation. Looking at the design, can you tell by the design how many vines you have to remove?
Yes, we, we calculated that it would probably be 48 single vines. Basically, within the interior part of where the lawn and the path will go, there are four rows, and each of the rows have, we were calculating that probably the vines were about five feet on center, and so we were thinking that there would probably be in those four rows 40 that were removed. There are some areas where we would like to extend the vines so that they come closer to the path. And so, when we did our calculations, we figured there may be about 48 that were lost, but we would put probably 20 back, so maybe there's a loss of about 28.
I see. And then, can you tell me, are the roses proposed to be on the ends of the bushes that are front Washington Street?
They're, actually, the rows, the vine rows run east-west, and so they would all be at the end of the row that is on the resort driveway.
I see.
But you see it from, there's a little rounded stone wall that's around the kind of turn-in circle as you come into the driveway to the resort, and the rows come in and touch to the back of that wall. So you would see it as you're walking along the sidewalk as well.
So, once you take the trees out and there are some, there are four art pads or three art pads, but there will be no roses along that?
Correct.
I see.
Yep. So they would just be at the end of each of the vine rows.
Thank you.
Yep.
And those are shown in the architectural drawing as being little circles at the very.
Yep, that's right.
I see.
Yep.
I think my main questions are going to be for Mr. DeVino, but just for clarification, there's no change at all to the path that you're talking about? You're calling it the resort road on the north side?
Correct.
Nothing changes there?
Correct.
Bocce courts, the walkway, the walls, everything?
Yep, that's all existing.
And no treatment change at the south end? No roses, no anything else that's along that existing walking path? It's closest to California Drive?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVino?
Thank you, Paige. Steve DeVino, I'm the general manager of Vlogio and Vintage Inn and the Vintage Estate. Thanks for tonight. What I would add to what Paige has said is that, you know, I guess with this entire project and everything we look at, we are looking to enhance and make, make better across the 22 acres. And the vineyard is, is, is one of those areas. We think it could be improved, the look and feel of it could be enhanced. And we also get a lot of requests from guests. We have over 100,000 people staying with us in a year at the hotel, and we get a lot of requests from guests to, about the vineyard and to experience the vineyard. So we, we're really excited about the educational component of this. And I've kind of looked around the other cities and towns in the Napa Valley, and there's really nothing quite like what we're proposing here. And I think it'll really go a long way to, you know, really showcase what the vineyard is and viticulture and celebrate viticulture is what it's all about. So I'm really looking forward to the programming. And, you know, our plan is to, is to offer it to guests as part of the experience of staying in the hotel. Someone mentioned yoga. We would love to do some yoga classes there in the morning for those who would want to do it. You know, when we, when we came into this project, we realized that there weren't, weren't a lot of programming things, you know? Yes, there's vineyards to, you know, and restaurants to go to, but we're looking for more programming on property. So that was the genesis behind this. And we also get requests by, by some of the groups staying at the hotel to do small events, and that's what we looked at, you know, creating this space for both of those Any, any questions?
That's it? Okay. Questions? Mr. DeVino? I'll start with Councilmember Dorman.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. So, the vines that are there, are the grapes sold for wine?
Yeah, so the vineyard is actually managed by the Hill family here in Yountville. Doug Hill, essentially, and Ryan Hill. They have a tasting room here in town, and they do the farming for us and the management. And we actually, they do the farming for us, they take the fruit, and they actually make wine from that, from that fruit. And they're actually making a wine from that vineyard for us that will serve to the guests. It's actually being made currently. It's called Origin, and it's, it's something that we're going to have for our guests as well.
And so, will Origin also be sold at retail, like out of the Hill family tasting room, or is it captive to the hotel?
Yeah, so, so Origin is their blended Bordeaux varietal kind of wine that they've produced for many years. And they'll sell it in their, in their tasting room, sure.
Okay.
As they have for many years.
And could you sort of describe the tasting experience for me in the, because it's not going to happen in your proposed lawn space, right? The tasting will be at the barrel room?
Yeah, the, the way we're looking at this right now is the, the tour would be upwards to 12 people, I think, as Sandra mentioned. We're, right now, we're looking at the programming of it between about seven months of the year in season. And it would run to start Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. One tour a day, about 12 people is what the, the volume would be. So it would start out in the vineyard with, with Doug, Doug Hill, or one of the staff, talking about viticulture and, and the whole process, and even taking part in certain things. If it's pruning or if it's harvesting, et cetera, you know, the guests could get involved in that, and visitors. And then, there's a space next to the barrel room, the main barrel room of the V Wine Cellar, that we've had for, as part of the hotel use for, forever. And that's where we would actually sample and taste the wine, discuss the wine. We've got a, a program that we're working on right now that discusses the, the history of the Napa Valley, you know, and, and as it relates to viticulture and the history of, of Yountville. There's so many great things I've learned about the history of Yountville that I think are really exciting. And we're going to talk about appellations specifically and, you know, try to get the guests the takeaway to be experiential, you know? And so, they've been in a vineyard, they've tasted the wine, they've, you know, it really enhances the guest experience. So it's, that's why I say it's part of the programming. It's, it's, it's really to enhance the guest experience.
And will the tastings be only the Origin?
No, no, we, we would, we would taste other wines, potentially from other appellations that were featuring. Some of the programming was to feature appellations, maybe it's the Yountville appellation or other appellations in the valley, but they would be able to taste that as well.
And how would you handle if you got up to two or three tours a day, or if you had people who were not hotel guests want to come and enjoy this?
I, I think, again, that, you know, the first priority is the hotel guest, so we'd have to see the volume. I don't expect it to be that, that high, but it's an offering that the hotel can provide and we can talk about. I don't see it being that, that large of a program. So, I mean, we could regulate it at some point, but I don't see it being, you know, as popular as, you know, lines of people to do this. We have other, a lot of other options in the, in the Napa Valley for this.
And where could a guest buy the wine that is tasted at your tasting? Do they would just have to buy it retail somewhere in town, or can they buy it at the hotel?
Well, you know, interestingly, so we do have, part of where this is going to be is we've looked at our liquor licenses, our ABC licenses, and the barrel room and the, and the room next to it that we've kind of enhanced a bit is called out in our liquor license. So technically, we could sell wine and spirits, pour them and sell them out of that space according to our, our liquor license.
And is there, as far as you know, a plan to sort of cross-pollinate with Hill family that in addition to your hotel guests, maybe they're wine club members, or maybe they offer it as a marketing that, look, you can come and take this great thing, this great tour?
You know, we haven't really discussed that. I mean, I, I used to own a vineyard, so, and Doug, and farmed it, and he's, he's really, I think, one of the foremost viticulturists in the, in the valley. So I haven't really, we haven't thought that through, but, you know, because he farms the vineyard, he knows a lot about it, and, and I think that's, that's really why we've decided on Doug to really do that for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Durham, any questions? Councilmember Mueller? Vice Mayor? I'm not going to let you off that, quite that easily. You came all this way.
I did.
Could you comment on, you heard me mention earlier about the possibility of restricting amplified noise to the current 10:00 PM, which is, I think, across the rest of the property?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on that? Is that something that you would?
Oh, it should be 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I think, I think you said it earlier, where if there's an event, you know, noise ordinance is the noise ordinance. We're going to respect that. And then, you know, if it can, you know, noise stops and people are still there for another half an hour or so, you know, that's where I said maybe, you know, it could go up to 11:00, where people are physically going to be, could be there.
So you're.
But the noise ordinances should be 10:00.
Yeah, you're still proposing the eight to 11:00 for special events seasonally and up to, I don't remember Sandra, if you had, or if you, the maximum number of guests at any one time that you're proposing?
Well, we, we, we looked at the numbers and, you know, it could go up to 80, potentially 80 people there. It's a lot in that, in that space, so I would anticipate more. It's in the 30 to 40 range maximum.
And the number of special events, is it called out? I know we do that in some cases, but it's not.
We looked at the numbers and we probably were, were looking at, you know, two, two to three a month in those seven or eight months, somewhere in that, in that area could be potentially that number, 20 a year.
Okay. And in terms of the string lights, just to clarify also, those would be installed and removed per event, not left up indefinitely?
Yeah, they're not permanent at all.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have for now.
Great.
I don't see any other questions from the council, so any members of the public in the audience want to comment on this? It is a public hearing. Seeing no one else, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing and entertain discussion by council. Would anyone like to start the conversation?
I'll start.
Councilmember Mueller?
I think this is a great extra use of that space. I think it's really going to improve that entryway corner into Yountville, so I think it's great. My calculations for vines on that square foot was 50, so I'm really glad you said 48. I could, like, yes, that's what I kind of thought. So anyway, I also did another calculation. It's only probably 1.8% of the total area, so it, it's very small. It's not an intensification of use at all. So I, I think it's going to really, overall, as I said, enhance that corner. I am fine with you staying there till 11:00 PM. I am fine with you staying there till 11:00 p.m. We have a six-month, we're going to come back and visit it. That gives you three months, pretty much, if you got it going, August, September, and October, to kind of see how that worked, if there's any problems. So I'm fine with, our noise ordinance, as you mentioned, is 10:00 p.m., but you could stay there till 11:00. I'm fine with that. And I think we just, the only thing we do need is, do we need to put anything in the resolution about acoustic versus amplified? Did you say as per town ordinance, or nothing at all? What was the final?
And otherwise comply with the town's ordinance is in number five, so I don't need, know that we need to go there, but...
Okay, okay, good. That's what I kind of thought, too. So those are my comments. Congratulations, it looks great to me.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilmember Doorman, please.
Thank you. As I said, I think it looks like a great project. I do have some reservations, and some I think are fixable, and some I am not sure if they're fixable or not. So the ones I think are fixable is, I do think there will be some additional parking burden. I think there are going to be more people using this. I don't think it's going to be all hotel guests. I don't really like the idea of taking out the trees. I think the art could be tucked in there, I think, as Mr. DeVino said. I think it would not enhance the entry to our town to take out a lot of that canopy If we get to that point, a number of the findings, I think, in the resolution, I find them to be more marketing and opinion than I do to be an actual support of the finding that we're making. And so I would like to see those rewritten just, excuse me, generally as this is how it is supported by the general plan, this, that, and the other. And I can be more specific if anyone cares about that. But the big one to me is, I've researched all that I could research, and Sandra was kind enough to send me a couple of things. When you go back in time, this is agricultural. And the use for hotel special events, while I think it would be really wonderful to sit in that vineyard and have dinner, I don't think that is an accessory subordinate or complimentary to an agricultural use. That is subordinate or complimentary to a for-profit use. It goes all the way back. The 1992 general plan says that the, on page 41, says the permitted uses within the agricultural portion will be limited to those which are civic in nature and are outlined in the zoning ordinance. If you then go to 1997, to the staff report, it notes, "This portion of the project site is designated for agricultural uses by the general plan." And in that plan, it is shown as agricultural on our zoning map. We just got the actual recorded document just prior to the meeting, and it seems to follow this same, it says, "The entirety of parcel one shall be confined to agricultural uses, including such uses as commercial grape vineyard, olive, row crops, fruit trees, et cetera, et cetera." And it says that the restrictive covenant continues in full force and effect in perpetuity unless this agreement is amended by an instrument in writing signed by the owner of the parcel in the town of Yountville. I have concerns that A, we are letting a commercial purpose overtake long-designated ag land, and B, if that were to happen tonight, I think it would have to happen through some sort of amendment of the original document. And those are just my thoughts on it.
Thank you.
All very interesting points from both council members. So would it need to be, Sandra? Sorry, I'm turning it into questions instead of my statement. Is it not, as is stated here, that agricultural uses, accessory uses, which are subordinate and complimentary to the primary use and open spaces area are allowed without permit? However, commercial facilities and uses deemed by the council to be similar are allowed upon approval of a use permit?
Correct. And it's before you, because we're not exactly sure where that line is designated between those two categories, where it's you allowed outright without permit if it's complimentary and subordinate, but if there's this sort of commercial aspect of it, it requires a use permit. They're all allowed within the agricultural zoning district that's permitted and allowed uses.
So it is allowed in this agricultural zoning?
Those are the rules that apply to the ag district, zoning districts.
Even according to this declaration of restrictive covenant?
This declaration, this covenant was put into effect before the current zoning ordinance. So we don't know exactly what it said back in 97 as to what was an agricultural use. But under today's zoning ordinance, the items that are noted in staff report are considered acceptable agricultural uses. I would turn to the town attorney for assistance with this one.
Yeah, is there a specific question that I can sort of help guide on this?
So is this covenant a declaration of restrictive covenant from 1997?
Yes.
So, but after that, the zoning for agriculture in Yountville changed, so that takes precedence?
Yes, so my understanding is that the zoning code was renumbered, and some of the uses changed in there. And so the current zoning code, which this restrictive covenant says the uses, the agricultural uses, shall be subject to and consistent with the town's zoning ordinance and agricultural uses. So currently, for parcels one, two, and three, and here, we're talking about parcel one. As to commercial uses, it specifically says, "Commercial facilities for processing or retail sale of agricultural products." That's what's requiring a use permit. However, permitted uses include subordinate and complimentary to the primary use. And using the ordinary meaning of those terms, subordinate means not the primary use, and complimentary is something that enhances or goes along with it. So I would note, though, that the council has substantial discretion to determine what is subordinate and complimentary here, and whether or not it's consistent with these restrictive covenants.
Okay. So I will say that I believe that this use, as presented by the applicant, is subordinate to this, and therefore, I believe that, I find that landscaping is like art. We all have our interpretation of what's good. Those trees are stunted, they're lower than everything else. That, I do ask, though, that there's more than four. It seems to me, if we're going to, if you're going to do the whole landscaping all the way down, that possibly we just ask for all of them to be removed and all of them to be replaced, as they're doing with the other four trees.
Based on the aerial photo that is in the rendering here, you can see it looks like four to five trees to the south of the utility box.
I, I mean, isn't, if we're removing the second row because it's stunted, is that not happening all the way down? The rows?
It would make sense to remove the whole second row. I didn't include a condition requirement, replacement trees for anything over and above four, because that was identified.
Correct.
And the same number was being replaced, so we might want to address that as a condition, if more considered for removal.
Okay. And given the, well, the applicant only has a short history with us, but given the level of, I have to have faith in what they've presented and what they've also have done in the past with their other projects as well, and know that they've invested considerably in this community, and given what they've done thus far, believe that this is good for this community as well. So I would like to support it with the change to the trees.
The removal of all the secondary pistaches?
Correct, and a replacement for all those removals then at some, on some point on the property.
You have that clearly, Michelle and Sandra? Okay.
Well, I think the tree issue is easiest for me to speak about, because I don't believe in taking all of the trees out. I'm not convinced that they aren't getting plenty of sun from the western exposure that they have. So I will support the four that they have originally said they want to take out and replace with olive trees. I can understand the auxiliary use of the education purposes of teaching people and your guests, and that's a nice thing to be able to offer them, to teach them by walking out into a little vineyard about, you know, care of the vines, and even if you were serious about allowing them to do some of those small projects under supervision of, you know, pruning or whatever it might be. I think that that's a really good use. But when I look at the picture of the dinner party all the way down between the vines that you included in the package, it seems to me that that's sort of using a natural space. Well, I'm torn about it, because it's very appealing. I've been to weddings that have had, you know, tables in the vineyards, and it's a very lovely experience. But that being our only, one of our only vineyards left in the town of Yountville, I don't know. I'm torn. I'm not quite sure how I would, will decide. I just have to say. I like the idea on the one hand, and then again, on the other. I think since it is agricultural, and we, you know, if we start subverting that, I don't know where it'll lead. Anyway, I haven't made up my mind yet.
Thank you. And you don't have to have made up your mind yet.
Oh, good.
I'll address some of the more kind of practical issues first. I think we should clarify amplified noise. If you feel that it's already covered by our noise ordinance and the way you have it referred, that's fine. I just want to make sure that it's clear that 10:00 p.m., like the rest of the property, according to our ordinance. And if you feel like the language already covers it sufficiently, I'm okay with that.
Mayor, if I would, the other thing is, if you're concerned about amplified noise, period, you could prohibit amplified noise, because there isn't any containment in that area like there is the event pavilions. I'm just saying, those are some options for you.
Okay, I'm going to go that option. I'm going to say, I would like to add that we prohibit amplified noise after 10:00 p.m., which happens to be consistent with the ordinance. But that was my concern. It's an open space, and the benefit is you're across from commercial operation on the other side of Washington Street. You don't have residential, any immediate area, but noise does travel, as we all know, pretty significantly in town. I appreciate the hesitation to remove trees, but I think the, I support the removal of all that secondary row of trees. I have long thought they are crowded, and I assume they were planted at a different time, because they're significantly smaller than the ones along Washington. It looks crowded to me already. To just remove them and not replace it with something aesthetically pleasing, I would not necessarily support. The fact that we're adding to the art experience makes total sense to me, as well as the consistency of a new ground cover that's kind of always looked a bit unfinished. I know some people call that natural, but I think it does look a little bit unfinished there, and you're proposing some ways to make it look more aesthetically pleasing. Let's also remember, this is within the town limits. Not every single grapevine that's planted in the Napa Valley is part of the ag preserve. This is private property. We have other properties in town that used to be planted to vine that are not planted to vine any longer, including on this vintage estate property itself. As beautiful as they are, this is our responsibility, I think, as a municipality, to support the commercial activity, the business activity within our town limits, for the very reason of supporting the ag preserve-planted land. So I think it's absolutely appropriate to remove some of these vines to support the commercial operation on the property. I don't make any connection, as some previous comment did, to the Hill family business. I know that Mr. Hill is the manager of the vineyard, but I don't see that relationship as a commercialization of this vineyard that would then trigger some violation of the definition of this use. I see this as open space that we've required as a town. It happens to be planted to vine, but there are other ways to continue to have it as primarily open space. Even the county itself defines agriculture to allow for marketing, sales, and other uses. And another part of that language, related and necessary support services such as farm management businesses, that's where I see this falling within that category. So I have no problem with what you're proposing. I appreciate the educational component of the vineyard experience. Some wineries in the valley have that. I don't think enough of them do it. I think the general public would be better off for learning more about the growing and farming of our vines, not just about what happens to them once they get in the bottle. I have been a part of some of those educational classes and find them quite interesting and enlightening. So I think that's a natural addition to the experience that you have on your property. So with those statements, I would say I find your proposal appropriate. I find that the modest changes you're making to that space to be appropriate also. I have no problem with that. The only other thing that I would say, and I follow up with Sandra, this may be satisfied with the review process. I worry about not identifying the number of special events, but if we, after six months, determine that there is an overabundance of them and it's having a negative impact, we could then put a restriction on that. I think we typically do call out the total number and the frequency. I know that right now you're saying two to three events per month. Then they become popular, and it's every weekend, and it's every weekend and midweek, and we just need to be able to regulate those impacts. But I'm comfortable seeing, if it becomes a problem and a nuisance, not to assume that it will be. Just realize that, at least my opinion is, that's something you need to be sensitive to. So those are my thoughts right now. I can support the application with those comments and a couple of the modifications of the conditions. Since I've heard some mixed feelings from the council, I'll encourage further discussion.
I do have a...
Councilmember Moller?
A question about the second row of trees. It seems like if there's a majority that's going to agree with that, we have, what's your sense, how many trees are we talking? And the reason I'm asking about that is because if they have to be replaced on the property, it might really have a negative impact on all the other grapevines. I mean, I do believe that if you take out that secondary row of trees, you're going to have a greater canopy in the primary row of trees, which is going to actually benefit what we're trying to achieve here. So are we talking 30 trees? I mean...
No, I'm looking at the aerial right now. It looks like maybe 10 to 12 total.
Okay, so are we also leaning towards that they must be replaced on property? But not this parcel? Not on this parcel? So some place on parcel one, two, or three at the discretion? Okay, fine.
If I could, I'd like to add a little more historical context for the council. The council has previous... The council has previously approved the removal of the secondary row of these pistache on the Plaza Corsha and up through the development of where Priest Ranch is. If you may recall, there had been a series of those and they were originally planted and that did not work well there either. And those were actions that have been taken over four or five years ago.
The conditions were a little different, Steve. They were surrounded by concrete.
Correct. I'm just saying, but the, what I'm sharing with you is, I think there was a design element at one point in time, which was to create a tree canopy, if you will, using the pistache on both sides of the sidewalk. It ultimately did not work in that area. I'm just saying, those were removed within five or six years ago.
Other dialogue from council? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. On the amplified noise or the noise at all, I do think the people who live in the front of Rancho de Napa will hear that, having lived there and hearing a lot of things from ad hoc over the years. I think they will hear that. Also, then I have a question, and maybe this isn't the time to ask it, but if we do a conditional use permit of three to six months, can we then go back and say, "Well, now we're going to impose a limit on your special events. We're going to change your hours. We're going to, we see you have more tours. We're going to now require parking." I mean, how much flexibility do we really have to go back and rework the details?
I think the short answer is you have great flexibility in terms of those areas and that's one of the reasons we do the review. I would advise you that the option you have is rather than not identifying the size or the number of events, you could also say, maybe you want to start with 30 events a year, limit the group size, hours, and go that approach, and then reevaluate if the applicant has and comes back and requests more. And then we could also have some broader experience. I mean, maybe you, maybe, excuse me, you want to limit it to 40 events a year and then they can come back and then we will be able to say, "Have we had any impacts? What's the argument?" Same way, if you really are concerned about amplified noise, then don't allow it. Acoustic music and various things. So I'm just saying, there's some things that you have the ability to do. And then when we come back, we can present findings based on the review and the analysis of the review period. And in some cases, we have made some recommendations. In many cases, the applicant has come back and said, "Hey, we've had some experience with this. We now want to do something different." In some cases, they've changed it. In some cases, they wanted to increase the activity. And in some cases, they've come back and said, "This idea didn't really work and we're not doing anything." We've seen the whole gamut in terms of how some of the commercial operations ultimately end up using some of the approval process.
And...
It's still your...
Oh, thank you. Okay, so, and having heard everyone's comments about the subordinate and complementary to the primary use, I still continue to have significant concerns. The primary use is vineyard. The primary use that it's now going to be used for is hotel guest service. It's not the primary use, they'll have one tour a day, that'll be vineyard, they'll sell the wine possibly in their own establishment, they'll do dinners, which has no real vineyard, no agricultural nexus. So I continue to think that we are in kind of tough waters here to make a nexus between the proposed uses other than the vineyard education. And that's all I'll say on that.
And that's why I brought up the Napa County definition of agriculture. It extends beyond the very purest definition of it has to be the growing and cultivation of the vines themselves and that alone. They have identified the definition to be broader and it's also broader, in my opinion, within the town limits. This does not fall within Ag Preserve so that there is more flexibility. I don't think a vineyard, just because you put a pathway and tables in it, stops being a vineyard. I disagree with your assessment of it's not a vineyard when you have a tour happening. It's still a vineyard, in my opinion.
I'm agreeing with you on the tour. It's the yoga, it's the receptions, it's the wedding parties. I agree with you on the tour aspect.
If I could, I want to bring one bit of clarification to the council. This is agriculture, not vineyard. Within the definition of the agriculture, they could pull up all of the vines and plant row crops. They could plant corn. They could plant sorghum. They could do a whole lot of things within the agricultural restriction that are not vineyard. I'm just saying, they've chosen to plant grapes, but I just want to make sure that when we're focusing on this, while it's currently a vineyard and I don't see that they have any interest, I just want to point out, the restriction is for agriculture and agriculture does not limit it only to grapes.
Okay. Councilmember Durham?
Does the, I'm sorry, what's in the middle of Vintage House and Velagio?
Pavilion?
Event Pavilion?
The Event Pavilion. Is there restrictions on the amount of events they can have there?
There is, yes.
Okay.
Since you've opened the issue, I did want to explain why I haven't put a cap on the number of events and that's because it's so loosely envisioned by the applicant, they haven't even set those boundaries. And so, and if we put a number in there that they'd like to exceed, it means they come back before you, which is fine, we can do that. But I thought what we're really looking at is impacts. And so if we look at it over a term of six months and we allow the use to develop, we can always bring them back before you. And the way the condition is worded is that we will evaluate the impacts of the use with the authority to bring it back to council for modification or revocation if significant impacts are identified. And so that upon the identification of impacts, it can be really changed in any manner before you. So I was trying to leave it open purposefully.
And the property owner takes a risk that if they build out the space and install the water feature and all that, and if they either create an unintended negative consequence or violate the conditions as presented, then it's on them and they have to, as you say, stop the programming.
And can I just...
Hold on, not quite yet. Councilmember Durham, continue.
And we're talking events per month, not per week, correct? As of right now?
They mentioned tonight, two a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to address Councilmember Dorman's concern about amplified music and my personal experience. I live right behind the Bardessona Hotel. They used to have these pool parties. They had amplified music. It was really annoying and obnoxious. And all they had to do, and they finally did, took many phone calls, was turn the speakers towards Yount Street instead of Vista Drive. And so I believe that they do have that amplified music and if it is a problem, it really, they can, if you direct the speakers towards Highway 29, I really doubt if you're going to hear them where you are. So that's just a personal experience that I've had that was very easy resolution and people in the pool could still hear the music just fine.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm glad that Councilmember Durham brought up the other space that they have where they have events. Do you have on the top of your head how many events they are allowed to have at the, you know, space just north of the...
No, but it's a whole lot. They're holding events out there all the time.
And could you, because I could envision with a large event going on there, an event of 80 people going on in this vineyard, that it would be, there's the possibility that it could be join forces in terms of the sound. And I still do not support taking all of the trees out. And for one thing, I think that a ground cover will never look as lovely as the trees along that area. I might be persuaded if you put rose bushes at the ends of those, at the ends of those rows also on Washington Street, but that, to me, that leaves Washington Street a little less grand than it was. And I think that, you know, we would have to have a six-month review and a possible, you know, revocation or possible, you know, allowing more or whatever. But I think if we do approve this, we definitely need to have it as a conditional use permit.
And just to clarify, there is no end of row on Washington Street? The rows parallel Washington? So there is, there's no end of row like there is at the north end? You're talking about, and I'm looking just at the aerial shot that's in the drawing set, you're talking about along here, that's all one continuous row, as opposed to the ends where they're proposing the vines, the roses to go?
Well, to me, they look like ends of rows.
And there's also, there's a six-month review in the resolution?
Yes.
Additional comments? So we're still talking, so I'll invite, this isn't the last chance I'll get to speak if you have something else to say. I would just reiterate that I don't see any spillover impact on the type of event we're talking about here. This is not like a full band with amplified speakers and dancing and 400-plus guests that are what you do at the Event Pavilion. We have mitigations in place there where you screen, where you're in the middle of the property. Certainly, the reason I was concerned about the amplified music is because this is more of an exposed portion of the property. But I do believe the buffer of the commercial district along Washington Street is more than enough of a buffer. As Councilmember Mueller mentioned, there are very easy fixes to, if there's a single speaker or four speakers out in this space, I'd be surprised. The type of experience you're proposing isn't setting up a stage with a band like you do in your event space. This is a much more intimate experience. Yes, you'll hear people talking and hopefully laughing and having a good time. That happens in our parks all the time, well past 10:00, hopefully on a regular basis. So I see this as a very reasonable additional programming opportunity for the property. I think that there is a sensitivity, and I understand it, that, and I alluded to it earlier, every single vine is held very near and dear and I get that. But in some cases, the private property owners have the right to make some changes, even to vineyard. We saw it and now we're quite comfortable, I think, in most cases at the Bardessona Hotel. Used to be six acres of planted vine that was privately owned. They preserved some of the vineyard experience there and built a high-end luxury hotel that I think has been very well integrated into Yountville. This is not even nearly that type of an impact that we're talking about here, so I don't have a problem with modifying the experience in the vineyard. Other thoughts? Would anyone else like to speak or make a proposal for any type of action?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Town of Yountville Resolution Number 17-3425, approving Design Review and Use Permit Amendment to Allow Hotel Guests and Limited Non-Hotel Guests Who Attend Events Within a New 1,550-Square-Foot Open Area Within the Velagio Vineyard Located at the Corner of Washington Street and California Drive Assessor Parcel Number 036-330-011, With Two Additions That We Stipulate That There's Removal Of The Entire Second Row Of Trees, Which Is, we don't need to put that in, But Approximately A Dozen, Let's Say, And For Replacement On The Property In Either Parcel One, Two, Or Three. And The Addition That We Strictly Prohibit Amplified Music Or Noise After 10:00 PM. And That Hours Of Operation Can Be From 8:00 AM To 11:00 PM.
I believe the conditions as they're presented, Sandra, are, aren't they nine o'clock for certain months and 11 o'clock for other months? Is that right?
Correct.
So is it as stated in the...
Well, I thought, does the resolution say 10:00 PM?
10:00 from March Through October And Then 9:00 For The Balance Of The Year.
All right, so I'm fine with them being open till 11:00. Is that what we're saying?
Let's clarify, I have it written down that the noise ordinance is 10:00 PM seasonally with 9:00 PM at certain times of the year. They're proposing special events as late as 11:00. So the noise ordinance relates to amplified sound, specifically not ambient noise like people talking at a party? Or is it any and all noise?
It would apply to party noise if it rose to that level, to be heard off-site at a certain level.
Over a certain decibel level. It's unlikely 12 people, but it's possible 80 people could surpass.
Just for clarification also, current town policy allows for payment of an in-lu fee for tree replacement if they're not able to plant on site. Would you be okay with that or not?
I'm fine with that. That's our policy.
So let's just clarify your motion about...
Yeah, the noise.
Hours of operation.
Okay, so right now, where is it in here, the hours of operation, so that we can all look at it?
I don't have hours of operation except for the closing hour, believing that's where the impact was.
Okay, where is that?
It's with Condition Number Five Related To All Guest Activity Shall Terminate By 9: From October Through May And By 10: From June Through September And Otherwise Comply With The Town's Noise Ordinance. So I'm hearing that that's not all guest activity, but you want to prohibit amplified sound after those hours and potentially allow the space to remain open till 11:00.
It's up to the motion or...
That's what, because right now, that's what they would like till...
Yes.
And that's all year round, the 11:00? Or do we specify it?
They're requesting year round, but they believe it will have its greatest demand during March Through October.
Okay. So...
Through October.
So if that's what's in there, that's fine with me, as long as we just add the restriction, prohibiting amplified music after 10:00 PM.
They say amplified sound, so that it's not...
Noise.
Okay.
Whatever word you want to use.
I got it.
So it's pretty much those two, the trees and I'm, if our policy allows for in-lu, I'm fine with that and amplified music restricting that. So there is the motion.
Is that clear, Sandra and Michelle? Okay. Councilmember Durham?
Please.
I was thinking we should put a closing hour on it, so if that is 11:00, let's include it as a condition rather than relying on the staff report and incorporating it by reference.
Okay.
I'm fine with that extra condition of, should we have an opening time too then? Are they going to be doing 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM? Is that, because they might be out there...
Sunrise yoga.
Yeah.
Are you okay with...
My only concern was the closing hour.
Are you okay with no later than?
Yes.
You don't need a start time? So no later than 11:00 PM?
Yes.
So you don't care what time they start? Okay. Then I'm fine with no later than 11:00 PM.
And you're adding that to the conditions in the resolution?
So we have three additional ones. Closing time, noise, and trees.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one point of clarification, there's no stipulation on the amount of events in this, correct?
As proposed and in the motion, though, there's not...
Thank you.
Right. Because I'm thinking we've got our six-month provision in here and I'll deal with it then.
Very good.
Were you going to make a second emotion?
I'll second the motion.
And have those motions in second been done?
Mm-hmm.
And when you push your buttons, if you could also verbalize your vote as well, I'm going to start the voting now.
Okay, so if we would, do you want to have the yes votes go first so you can record voices or are you going to be able to discern all five?
You're going to record them, but...
Okay. So go ahead and please cast your vote on your tablet and verbalize it, please?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Abstain.
Okay, so that does pass three to one with one abstention. Congratulations. And thank you for the discussion. Take just a moment as we... We're going to move on to our first administrative regular item, which is an update on the Veterans' Memorial Park sculpture. Samantha, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Is it going to come up? Okay, oh, there it is, awesome. Good evening, council, mayor and council. So I'm here tonight to give you an update on the Veterans' Memorial Park sculpture ad hoc, which we have two council members here, and I believe Dee is also here representing the ad hoc commission, committee as one of our arts representatives. So as you might recall, the council asked for an ad hoc committee to be formed to look at the Veterans' Memorial Park sculpture that will be going in eventually in Veterans' Memorial Park as part of that renovation project. The committee was made up of two council members, two Parks and Recreation Advisory Commissioners, two arts commissioners, and three veterans, three veterans, they actually are all Veterans Home residents, but that wasn't a requirement. So we distributed a call for artists in March of 2017 after the committee worked on the language that was in the call for artists. It was left fairly open-ended for artists to create that submission based on their representation of the call. It was required to be one of a kind, so it couldn't be part of a series or something, a reproduction, and embody the spirit of the United States Military Veterans Past, Present, and Future. So the original commission in the call for artists was set at $20,000, and the artists were also given the opportunity to see detailed plans and progress photos of the park project, and were offered to go tour the facility with staff prior to submitting. We put the call for artists out through Cafe, which is a website that's worldwide, and artists look for call for artists on there, and we received over 100 submissions to the call from 67 artists. So we spent considerable time going over each submission based on the suitability and the requirements that we set forth in the call, and we pared that down to 20 sculptures, which were brought forward to the ad hoc committee to jury. So the first round of juring was pretty basic and consisted of each member just really taking that 20 and ranking their top five. So we took that information, and the second round of juring consisted of the top five ranking sculptures. We did meet in person to go over those sculptures, and we went one by one through each design. At the end of the meeting, the committee agreed on a top two, and we then scheduled teleconferences with the two artists and also offered them the ability to send mockups or any other items that they wished to further outline their submission. So after a lengthy discussion after the teleconference calls, the ad hoc agreed to move forward with the sculpture proposed by Robert Eccleston titled Faces of Freedom. I don't know where to look.
It's on the list. New monitors are already on the list.
It's like, boy, I can see it freaking out. So the sculpture...
Okay, they're turning around looking.
Okay. Please turn around and look.
Sorry, everybody.
So Robert is a former U.S. Army Infantry Officer. He turned sculpture after leaving, sculptor after leaving the military. He specializes in creating veteran and civic memorials. He shared with us, both in his application and then in a lot more detail in our phone call, kind of the ideas behind his design Faces of Freedom. So he really focused on the inclusion of U.S. veterans by showing representation of not just, or both men and women, different races, different wars, and different branches of the military in his design. So as you may be able to kind of see, and I'll show some pictures with detail as we move forward, each of the dog tags will be a base relief. It's hand-sculpted and then cast in either stainless steel or bronze, so the committee's working through those kind of final design elements. There's also one plain dog tag that will have a high sheen, and that one is there in the middle on the bottom, and the idea is that those visiting the sculpture would see their reflection in that and also see themselves as a face of freedom. It would be placed at a level that is accessible to all. So the ad hoc is working with artists on the materials that they feel would ensure the sculpture is not easily open to potential theft, and it, but it still has an appropriate stature and feel for the park. The current proposal is eight feet tall, eight and a half feet wide, and about two feet deep. The sculpture's made to be one-sided, so it's made to just be viewed from one side. There's also space for an inscription at the base of the sculpture, and the ad hoc committee will work to finalize that language before we bring the final sculpture design back to the council for approval. So the ad hoc committee also spent time citing where they would recommend the sculpture be placed in the park, and I have two proposed sites for your feedback tonight. Tonight, I'm looking more for just feedback from the council that we're moving in a direction that you're happy with. We, I'm working around vacation schedules for another ad hoc committee meeting where we'll really hone in with the artists on the final design. There was a lot of discussion around the bronze pieces to the sculpture and the safety of that. The artist has some other ideas about how to ensure it's safe, but the committee also asked him to design, if he could design it in a different metal, which his preference would be stainless steel dog tags instead of the bronze, and so that's something that we have to kind of hone in on and really, really come up with that final design. Although stainless steel is a safer option, it could significantly increase the price of the sculpture. So as you can see, this is the overall mockup of the design. The Faces of Freedom you can see here, more of a non-color descriptor. These are a little more detailed of his designs for the actual dog tags, and so as I referenced, they represent different branches of the military, as well as time periods and wars, as well as men, women, in different ethnicities as well. So the sites that we talked about are both on the west side of the park. We did, the committee walked, a lot of us were out there walking, staff walked it as well. We agreed that the entrance to the park there at California and Washington is already fairly busy with things, so there are flagpoles there on each side of the walkway, as well as the park, the bronze park dedication plaque is there as well. As you walk into the park, there's the marble inlay with the inscription, so there's a lot going on there already. The two sites that were recommended by committee members are, like I said, both on the west side of the park. Oops, I thought I had another one on here. Maybe I went too far. As you're walking along the pathway there, they're not too far apart. One of them is just a little more north there, as you see on the bottom picture. It's adjacent to these two rock pedestals that are there already, which only one has an actual plaque on it, which would be taken off and placed somewhere else in the park, and those would be removed. The other site is just south of that between two newly planted oak trees that we planted this summer. So I'm asking just for feedback from the council this evening, and I welcome the, either two council members who represent on the ad hoc committee, as well as Dee Heiser, who's here with us tonight, if you want to make any comments or fill in where I've missed anything. That would be great. Thank you.
Any comments?
Oh, sure. Yes, I can happily talk about. The three veterans who were on the ad hoc committee with us all talked about the significance to veterans of their dog tags and how it's a, you know, it's something that every military person shares. And then we were really entranced with the idea that there would be one blank one where you would see your own reflection when you look, because, either because you appreciate what other people have done for our freedom, or because you, you know, for one reason or another. So I thought it was a beautiful design. It was actually, the last two were chosen by all of the committee members, and then this one we chose unanimously as well. Dee, did you want to say something?
If you do, you need to come up to the podium and speak to the microphone. You don't have to, but you're welcome to.
Arts Committee doesn't, Commission doesn't use microphones, so.
Right. We have voices, voices. I just want to remind, or I thought that when we walked the premises, that we discovered those, the stones that were already on the trail, that we wouldn't have to remove them. That's just something I had a question about. Some of them do have plaques and...
That we wouldn't have to remove them?
We said we wouldn't have to remove them, which is fine.
One of them has a plaque, both of them are located there with no specific significance of their location.
Yeah.
And there are other stones, similar stones, kind of scattered throughout town in various parks. There seems to not be any real rhyme or reason as to their location, so Samantha was proposing that there be a more kind of specific and intentional representation.
More like a collective path of...
Yeah, we have, they're, they, these plaques, we find them everywhere, and so one of, like John mentioned, one is missing from there, so we would take the other one off, and we'd find a more suitable location in the park. And this happened when we were doing the Vineyard Park project as well, we found one buried, and so we tried to track down the family and make sure they knew what we were doing, and so we take, we take a lot of care of those plaques.
Yeah, just as, I mean, as I recall, there probably won't be an issue in moving them, so just in case it would be too disruptive or somebody else would have an issue with that. And then also the artist's materials, his choice of materials. We, in the art committee, we have tried to make a commitment that not to use so much bronze because of previous theft, and as you can see, those resemblance of the dog tags, they could be easily snipped off, unfortunately. So the issue is the material that the artist would choose, and stainless steel, of course, is more expensive, and we didn't ask them if he could use titanium, which would also kind of resemble the steel look of dog tags, which is less expensive, but there is probably going to be an increased cost in the materials, that's all. So I guess that would have to be approved, and I think it'd be a nice addition to the park, especially where it's going to be placed, not, I assumed it was going to be placed in the front, so I had some issues with that.
We worked through that.
Yes. Okay, I think that's all.
Thank you, Dee.
Thanks, Dee.
I'll just add a couple other things in our discussion. One was how impressed we all were with Mr. Eccleston. Very impressive. Every single element to his concept was very thoughtfully identified, and so we really, I think, grew very quickly a sense of respect for all the elements that he has considered. The images are very specific and thoughtful about generations and various representations as he made them, and it's true that there is the possibility of a need for increased budget consideration. We had a fairly, I'd say, this kind of a guesswork at the number originally, and we, this council has made decisions in the past to not have budget as our primary decision-making issue for the elements of this Veterans' Memorial Park, so we may have to have that conversation again, but I think, while you list in the staff report that it's a fairly substantial, I think from a percentage standpoint of the original number of 20,000, I don't see it as a significant dollar amount for what we've invested in the experience in this park since that budget was really, before we knew what any of the artists were going to be proposing. We did find that the budget amount was restrictive with the types of quality and thoughtfulness in the proposal, so I would support reconsideration by the council, we just don't have a number yet.
And part of what I was, I'm going to be working on as we work through with the ad hoc on the final design is we're looking at the project budget for the Veterans' Memorial Park renovation to see if there was money that could be rolled over for that, and then working with Steve to pinpoint where we might, you know, utilize those funds from. I just wanted to mention as far as price as well, looking at a lot of sculptures, I preview everything we get through the Arts Commission through Cafe, and the quality of this piece, I think, just really well exceeded what my expectation of $20,000 was. And he's also trying just to be very conscious of our budget. He's sourcing the granite locally, obviously, which is a good thing, because it doesn't have to be shipped, and, but it's also using local vendors as well, saving us money.
Yeah, the last thought about the location, there were, most of the committee actually went out live to walk spaces, and it, it was a little bit surprising how quickly we identified very few appropriate locations, you know, this wasn't going to go by the volleyball court or, you know, the restroom facilities or parking spaces or anything like that, so it did kind of, in my opinion, there was kind of a natural space that presented itself between some of our brandly, brand-new oak trees that were planted there that could create a nice canopy, considered the direction of the sun so that the reflection of the one blank dog tag could work most of the day, things like that, so there was quite a bit of thought put into it by the ad hoc committee members.
Yes.
Any questions specifically from the council?
I have a statement on the site. Just as with landscaping, art is in the eye of the beholder. To be honest, and not to be condescending, but it might come across as such, Slice of Life definitely cuts into that as to its effect, so I would just like to make a comment that moving forward, that the Arts Commission
Yeah.
Just realizes that.
It's already in the plan for that sculpture to be relocated, so...
Maybe it can go on the empty pad that's been across the street from Bistro Jean T. for two years.
We have one going in there next week.
Excellent.
I had to think about that. Yeah, new sculptures going in there, but we are, it is in the plan to move that sculpture, hopefully in the next few months, so we all, they are all in agreement with that. Sores them, sticking out, yes.
Once the renovation of that side of the park was finished universally, I think, people realized it was just not appropriate there anymore. Other thoughts or questions? Councilmember Mueller?
No, I just think that it's really going to be, I think everyone's done a great job in bringing this out to all the artists, and I'm very, very impressed with the number that really kind of came back, and I think this choice, I know you've got a little, some minor details, but it's such a great artistic symbol, especially by a veteran, you know, in expressing and honoring military service, I just think it's wonderful. I both, you know, I could go one way or the other with the two sites and kind of slightly leaning towards one that's closer to the main part, but whatever you choose in terms of a site, I really don't have a preference there, but I think it's going to be a wonderful sculpture, so thanks to everybody who put a lot of time into this.
Councilmember Durham?
I think the concept is really, really wonderful. I'm really looking forward to it, and yes, I know a lot of time and hard work has gone in, and thank you one and all. So if you could just clarify for me, please, Samantha, are you looking tonight from us just to say bring back a final?
Yeah, just some, your feedback is great. I just, number one, wanted to let you know where we're at, and number two, just to make sure we're going down a road that you're all on board with and no one has a huge aversion to it, I guess, yeah.
It's really fabulous.
So we're basically asking the artist, sorry, we're basically asking the artist to do more work
Yeah.
Before we commit to a contract with him, so we didn't want to ask for additional commitment from him if the majority of the council felt this was inappropriate.
Because there's a little bit of redesigning going on around the safety and the metals, and so, you know, they put a lot of effort in upfront to make these designs, and he went above and beyond with just his original proposal compared to what we got from other people, so I just want to make sure before I, like John said, take up more of his design time, that we're going down the right path, so. It sounds like we are, and I look forward to bringing this back at the September meeting, hopefully for your final approval, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, what I think most of the rest of our group is here for, the Napa County Library Agreement. And we intentionally talked quite a long time, Scott, so that you could get here from your delayed commute.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you tonight is a resolution authorizing a continuation of a new agreement with the Napa County Library, NCL, to provide 4.5 hours of additional library service above the base allocation level. The Town of Yountville Town Council has a longstanding history of making a significant investment in its local library branch dating back to 1977 by providing space in its town. investment in its local library branch dating back to 1977 by providing space in its town hall and now in the Yountville Community Center, supporting volunteer extended hours, and most significantly by providing the NCL with additional financial resources to allow the Yountville branch to be open hours beyond what the base level of hours allocated by the NCL. The Town of Yountville is the only incorporated community that is providing additional resources and paying for additional hours beyond that provided by the Napa County Library System. The most recent agreement between the county and the town was approved in 2013 for the purchase of 4.5 additional hours, allowing for the Yountville branch to be open, a total of 28.5 hours. The Napa County Library Commission and subsequently the County Board of Supervisors approved a new cost allocation and financial plan for the library system that became effective January 31st, 2017. The new plan is the method that the library uses for spreading its overhead and for establishing its budget, and it's based on visitation and circulation. The new financial plan was determined to update the annual hourly cost for additional library hours. And they've determined that that cost for Yountville will be 11,563 hours currently the hourly, which will result in a cost of $52,033. Last year, the cost for the same 4.5 hours was $43,000. This represents an increased cost of $9,000. I provided some detailed attachments in terms of the library budget and the proposals and the financial plan. And I will point out that Library Director Dennis Krymeier is here, as well as Library Commissioner Scott Owens. So currently, we have, under the new model, I will point out, the new base model provided 20 hours as the minimum for the library. We have a prior in lieu of rent agreement for two hours. And the library, at her discretion, has provided two additional hours for 24 hours. The town pays for the additional 4.5 to equal 28.5. Library Director and I had conversations based on prior council interest in what would it take to get us open more. And you'll see some of the discussion in the staff report that talked about the additional cost that if we were to look at funding another eight hours to provide another day open. And you can see that that ranges anywhere from 100 to 128. And the Library Director and I have indicated that there would be a willingness to discuss if the council was interested in that in more detail, what that might look like more appropriately for next year. I will also point out that your budget included $52,000 for this level of expenditure. But tonight, what we're looking for is obviously to continue to provide the funding. If the council doesn't fund the agreement, then the library hours will be reduced. And if there is an interest in the council having engaged dialogue for planning purposes or otherwise in terms of your direction on library hours, it would be helpful if you could provide that so that staff could work on that for next year's consideration. With that, Library Director is here and has waited through the whole meeting. So if there's any questions or comments, she's here, our Library Commissioner is here. I'll answer any questions you may have on the agreement. The agreement has been reviewed as is our standard by both County Council and the Town Attorney. And with that...
Okay, questions of Steve before we invite others? Now, I'm assuming we'll hear Dennis from you about why it costs so much to have these hours. So just be prepared for that question. I'm sure you probably already are. But with that, if you would please come forward. Thank you for being here tonight.
So, thank you for having me, Mayor and Town Council. One thing I just wanted to say before we started off and any of your questions is I just want to congratulate the Yountville library staff on the amazing programs that they've been doing. They have really, Ruth and Rebecca have done an amazing job about bringing people in. Ruth is kind of getting a reputation of the Pied Piper of Storytime. People come from Napa and even Marin County to come to her Storytime in Sonoma. Everybody has really enjoyed that. And also her, the STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and math, those are also very popular. And that falls into our understanding of what people really want in a library these days. It's like places to come and be and learn and experience things. It's not just a warehouse of books where people come and take an item and go. They really want to come and engage in their community. So the library staff has really done that. And we're seeing the program grow. And it's also very particular to Yountville, very tied in to Yountville's interests. She's honed in on what people really want from their library here, just like all our branches focus on their communities. And Ruth and Rebecca have done that exceptionally well. So I just wanted to give them a shout out, even though they're not here tonight, so...
You ready for questions?
Yeah.
Okay, the first one, I already threw it out there. If you could explain, as it's presented in the staff report, how you calculate the cost for hours in explaining the increase of $9,000 over last year?
Yeah, well, there hadn't been an increase in cost since 2013. And so we also were looking at a new financial plan. We had an ad hoc committee, of which your representative was on our ad hoc committee. And they really wanted to look at, before it was just circulation. And we realized that as we expand our services, it's also that we wanted to look at use as well. So looking at those factors, how do you capture? We had a really robust discussion about electronic resources because that doesn't bring people in the door. They're virtual. And how do you count that? And does that count? But we really ended up settling on using the factors of circulation and attendance. And Scott can probably talk more to that. So we use that as a factor to create a percentage of usage and then spread out the costs. And costs have increased. And so, you know, things like delivery and personnel costs and all that. And so we were really, this was a lot of a catch-up because we hadn't increased the cost for so many years, and a true-up as well. And if you want to get into the nitty-gritty of the actual math, I'm going to have Danielle come up for that, but I hope that gives you kind of an overall.
Well, we'll see if the council has other questions to follow up.
Sure, you bet.
Councilmember Durham?
Just to understand this, so you're saying that our increased use because of what they are doing here is so successful is creating an increased cost?
Not really, no. The increased costs were just increased anyway. What that does, it changes the formulas so that you will actually get more revenue as well. So it's a balance, it's a balance. Is that, yeah.
But that increased use doesn't play into any increased hours unless we pay for it, correct?
Not at this time because everybody's use at all the other branches rose as well. If Yountville were to suddenly shoot up and the others went down, and then it would relate to that, but that's not what's happened. Pretty much everybody has increased about pretty much the same.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Durham, questions at this point? Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
I'll hold any other questions for now. I think we can have Mr. Owens get up and make some comments also. It's been a head-scratcher for us for quite a while, why the costs are as high as they are. And they'll always be a disadvantage to us as a small community with a small branch if you use the same formulas you use everywhere. So that's a challenge for me to come to grips with. But Mr. Owens, do you want to make any comments on behalf of us as a representative? Maybe how the conversation has gone? I mean, you came all this way after all. I know it was coming home, but...
Well, what struck me as I read the staff report was the analysis and the potential consideration for Friday hours, that this is something that the council might consider. Since I began this role in 2014 and beginning in March 2015, it was a main topic from the residents of the town to find ways to have the library open more hours, specifically on a Friday. The town has been very generous in supporting these extra hours, 4.5 hours, over these many years, since 2013 and now in 2017 with a new resolution that's before you. And when the town, Steve and Priya and I put together a survey last year, one main response from the town was more hours on a Friday. So I'm really excited to see this as something that's up for consideration and working with the county and staff to analyze the costs involved for that, for even in this current fiscal year, next fiscal year, to see what, what those true costs per hour are. And as we saw in the staff report, that the cost per hour with more hours is actually reduced. So that's something I'm really excited by, to see this opportunity for this consideration.
Thank you. Any questions of Scott? No, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other members of the public to speak to this. You can if you'd like. Are you here support-wise? Yeah.
I actually, they're analyzing.
I know. But you're still a member of the public.
I'm fine.
Okay, so then I'll just invite further discussion by the council. And also, I think to clarify what Mr. Owens was just referencing, I think the, the concept of a full Friday is listed here. It isn't necessarily being presented as an action item, but it's for consideration. And if I'm correct, Steve, and then could you explain purely based on an additional Friday, what the cost we're talking about?
Well, I think one of the things that I would identify is, first of all, is there an interest on the part of the council to look at broader hours? And I might suggest we look at being open 40 hours. It could be Friday, it could be others. But the total hours for a 40-hour staff, what would that be? So that's premise of some of the conversation that the Library Director and I had. And I think as you can see, when we've done some of the math, I think there's some opportunities that might be able for us to look at it differently. And also, how do we better understand what is the, the base allocation? And then what is the incremental cost? So the recommendation from staff, which is purely that, is from a budget standpoint, when we started this year's process, we talked about maintaining our status quo but being open. Library Director and I have had some conversations, and we think it might make more sense for us to work on, if there's a council interest, to better understand the budget to go to 40 hours or Friday hours for next fiscal year and use the time to properly analyze the cost and better understand what that might be so that we can present that. Because your adopted budget only has the money to fund the 4.5. It does not include the potential of the additional $128,000 that would be necessary if you were to go to Friday hours.
But, so just for clarification, we already have it in our budget to get the 4.5 and the $52,000.
That is correct.
You're asking us to adopt the resolution to validate that because you need to for the county?
Well, we actually, the county is requesting a new contract to reflect the new cost for service, so...
That would, that would just satisfy what the council has already directed to have happen.
Correct. The resolution before you maintains the status quo at the new price that the county is...
With the 4.5 additional hours.
Correct.
So it's not a status quo. It's adding 4.5 hours at the new cost.
No, it's, here's what I would say. The status quo right now is 28.5 hours because the town has historically provided and funded the 4.5 additional hours. If we didn't fund the 4.5 additional hours, the county would reduce the hours that the Yountville branch was open. So that's why I say the premise in the prior discussions the council had in budget guidance was to maintain. In this conversation, it led us to look at if we wanted to do something, what might that cost be?
Right. So the current number of hours would stay the same. It's the $52,000 would be the increase, to stay the same hours.
Correct.
And you proposed, not proposed, you've shown us the cost of adding an additional day.
Potentially, and opening up some discussion. And again, this is, you know, we present options for the council and...
Okay, so based on that, Councilmember Durham?
But is, I'm very confused. I, I have a hotel with 18 employees that runs 24/7, and it appears easier to staff it and understand my cost than this. So even if we were to say we like that idea, there's nothing saying that in two months the county won't change the numbers again. And even if we say we want it to be open Fridays, it's not going to happen until the next fiscal period?
No, I can... Okay, let me try to clarify, Councilmember Durham. The proposal right now, you have feedback...
It's just what we have now.
Correct. And that will cost you $52,033.
So my point is, it's 910. Why even have the discussion for Friday if it's next year, knowing that costs are going to change, knowing that nothing can happen tomorrow, let alone in six months?
Well, here's a couple of things. One, things move incrementally. And if you're interested in us looking at the, you know, if that is something that you would like more discussion and more analysis, the feedback from you would be, we would like to pursue that. Can you please sit down? And maybe you have an ad hoc committee or people working to look at what it would be. And that would be what we would look at for next year. And I'm just saying, that part came out of it. We don't have firm direction from the council that that is something you wanted to do, and it's not something you funded.
We have had, we have had...
Hold on just a second. Gary seems to want to say something that always makes me nervous.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I would just add a couple of things, the provisions of the agreement. It caps the annual cost, the fiscal cost, to $60,000, so it's never going to go over that. The term here is for initially three fiscal years with the option to review, renew for two more. And...
Their cost or our cost?
The cost of the town, the cost of the town. And although the...
This wouldn't even work because it's $76,211 more.
Correct. And that's why, to follow what Town Attorney is saying, the recommendation for you tonight is to approve maintaining the 4.5, provide direction if you would like further dialogue and analysis on what additional hours would be.
Didn't we have an ad hoc committee before for the library?
We had one a number of years ago.
And it disbanded?
Correct.
But we have the Library Commissioner.
The library, we appoint an individual that serves on the County Library Commission. So that person, and that is Mr. Owens.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure Gary finished.
Thank you.
Finish your thought.
Yeah, the only follow-up I had to that was although the money's been appropriated, this is what actually obligates the town to pay it over. And it makes it clear, there's some indemnity provisions in here as well, and it allows termination, so there's ways to get out of it, so...
So if I understand it correctly, the direction from this council, especially through the budget process, was to do exactly what you're proposing here. The Friday additional hours is really irrelevant to the action you're asking for tonight. It's a second action. And I know, Steve, you'd like to add it to your conversation. I agree with Councilmember Durham. It's confusing the conversation more than it's helping it because we don't know if the numbers you're proposing here will be relevant at all in our next budget cycle. If you want direction for us to say, please find out what it might be to add Friday or additional hours on top of the 4.5...
All right, let's try one more time.
I understand what you're saying. I just don't like what I hear.
So do I. And I agree completely, especially, I mean, I've been in this town for 13 years, and I've heard this discussion for 13 years. I still can't believe it's not resolved, is my confusion.
Again, if the council simply wants to maintain the 4.5, that is there. If you would like for us to have a discussion to look at the cost, refine it, then that's what I'm asking. So think of it as two steps if you want to look at it that way.
So I'll propose for council consideration, a motion to accept, as presented here, the additional, or the budget increase of $52,033 to cover the 4.5 hours that we've already agreed that we want to add.
Well, I'd like to, and it doesn't have to be part of that motion, but to Steve's point, I do think, and to many points that were brought up here, the formation of an ad hoc committee, we used to have one, it was set up for a different purpose. I think that, you know, if we do have... I think that, you know, if we do have up to a year to really work through it once and for all, to Councilmember Durham's point, you know, I think that would be a very fruitful thing to do. And we could, you know, have, set specific goals, work with, you know, in conjunction with the county, you know, to really identify if there are any additional opportunities for our community to have access to our local library. So, we don't have to make that as a condition, but I would like to somehow make that part of what-
It's not part of our action tonight. I'm making a motion that we increase the budget to $52,033 to cover the 4.5, as it's presented, in order to be able to finalize this contract with the county.
What I really like you to do, Mayor, is you just, you need to approve the resolution authorizing entering into the agreement.
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution 17-3426, approving entering into a three-year contract agreement with the Napa County Library System for purchase of 4.5 additional library hours to enhance the base level of hours provided by NCL in the amount of $52,033 for fiscal year 1718. So, once we have that conversation, we can discuss whether we want to do anything about additional hours beyond that. So, please cast your vote. It went away.
Mine did too. Do you want to do a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 So, that's 5-0. Yes, we are going to pay the additional $52,033 to cover the 4.5 hours that have been added.
And I agree that it would be a good idea to have an ad hoc committee to work with the county and talk about having Friday hours.
So, is there an interest in the majority of the council to have this further discussion? Are there volunteers to, two members that would want to be on that? So, councilmembers Dorman and Mohler are volunteering. Any further discussion on that?
I'm checking anybody's votes.
No.
I second that.
So, do you want an actual motion to create that ad hoc? So, I'll move that councilmembers Mohler and Dorman are ad hoc representatives to further discuss the costs associated with additional library hours. And I believe the second was already made by, we're not going to do it electronically. Councilmember Durham, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Are you really?
Yes. I know, it's shocking this leg out.
Okay, so that's 4-0 with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing what information you learned. Steve?
No, I'm just trying to figure out all the abstentions.
Right, I'm not sure either, but-
And I say that, I'm going to apologize a little bit, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but I'm going to ask the council to go back and review the town council protocols as it relates to the use of abstentions, and then I'd like to have a conversation with you on some of those, just if you could, for some of you, just so I, Gary and I need a better understanding of what's driving that increase, and then we may need to look at revisiting the protocols. So, I just, for any of you, if you have questions on that, it would be helpful for Gary and I to help provide guidance and understand.
There are specific conditions in the protocols listed for abstentions or actual votes.
Correct. Right now, the basis for, the basis for an abstention is really limited, and I just want to make sure that we're all understanding of what that is. And if there's a broader sense of how and why it's being used, I think Gary and I need to better understand that, or we need to do a better job of presenting the issues. So, I don't want to mean that, but I just think that's what we need to look at.
We got that. Thank you.
Mayor, and just for the record, I'm going to just introduce that Carol Fink submitted a letter in support of the additional 4-point hours, 4.5 hours for the library. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
That was my omission, since we didn't have anyone live in the audience, in the public, I forgot to mention that, so thank you. Next up, we're going to announce the vote for the Napa Valley Transportation Authority Active Transportation Committee appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. The council interviewed Michael Costanzo earlier this evening, and the vote tally is unanimous to appoint Michael Costanzo to the NVTA ATAC with the term of office to commence immediately and expire May 2020, subject to confirmation of the NVTA board. So, with that, ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, is there a motion to that effect?
And you can use your iPad.
I make so motion.
Did your iPad work?
We're going back to the cameras.
I apologize, I apologize. I don't know, it disconnected, I apologize. Give me a second.
I'm going to do it for you.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Vote fast before it disappears.
I know.
It's like an Etch A Sketch.
Pretty sure where this is headed. Yes, we agreed that Mike Costanzo will be our representative. On behalf of the council, I'd like to thank Mike for his continued and energetic interest in active transportation and representing Yountville, so thank you very much. Staff informational reports. I know that there was a request. Sandra, are you in a position to be able to give an informational report?
Yes.
Okay. Scott, thank you very much. We know it was not an easy commute back, so appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, I requested that Sandra give us an informational report related to Chichio and the removal of the market lettering on the exterior of the building.
So, what occurred was, we, staff observed that they were painting over a portion of the sign on a day, and Nathan Steele in the office dropped by and spoke with the landscape contractor, who indicated they were hired by the property owner to do work, and that they had encountered dry rot and some damage. They were painting and priming, and they'd taken a stencil of the market, and it would be repainted. So, upon hearing of that, hearing that that was the condition, we determined that that was a violation both of the municipal code as to design review and use permit, but also to the entitlement. So, we sent a notice of violation, giving a reasonable time to cure, which was a 15-day period, which is the minimum for building or zoning violation. And we offered options to bring it into compliance, one which was obviously to repaint it immediately or to submit an application to amend the permit to bring the entitlement in line with the conditions. And they elected to submit that application. We follow the Administrative Enforcement Chapter of the municipal code, and it defines when we can attach a fine or administrative penalty to a project. And a fine can only be applied if an, a person in violation doesn't bring it in, doesn't cure it within the period to abate that's in the letter, which they were able to do here by submitting the application. And an administrative penalty is an option for something that is a serious or more ongoing violation of the code, and there are a number of factors that we consider. It is a subjective call. The balance of the factors, we thought, weighed in favor of not imposing the administrative penalty. And one of the challenges staff has in doing an administrative penalty is that we're required to issue the notice violation first, and we've always took that to mean that they need to be in separate actions. So, we're not prevented from doing an administrative penalty at this point. We've set the preliminary steps in motion, but it was a call of the department that, really, the balance of factors weighed in favor not of doing the penalty while they were in, while they were, while they were pursuing an application to cure the violation, which now means they have to go before the ZDRB on August 8th, and then the council on September 19th, because it was a condition of their use permit, but it obviously affects the design element as well. So, that's where we're at.
Is there any evidence of dry rot as presented by the painter?
We have a letter from the owner, and it seems, after the fact, it seems more as if it was standard maintenance rather than identification of dry rot.
That would be a no?
No.
Okay. And I believe council made explicit condition that the market lettering be retained when previous request by the property owner was made.
There was no decision on his application. It was a, well, there was a decision, it was a 2-2 vote, so it didn't go. It was an approval or denial.
To remove it.
So, yeah. So, and he did have explicit direction that you need to come back before us, you need to demonstrate that there is confusion, and you need to present better proof that this isn't historic. He didn't do either of those actions, until it was painted over, and we got sort of forced into this corner.
Okay, so, Councilmember Durham?
Just one clarification. He needed to either show that it was detrimental to the business or non-historical, and now he has started that process to do that? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Has he already completed that process with you, or that's what he will do with the ZDRB and with the council?
Right. The application is submitted, now it will come before the ZDRB and council, and the decision will be made whether he has level of proof that rises to the standard that it can be approved or not.
Thank you.
And the level of proof, as you're defining it, is what? Because there was, I don't think the level of proof, maybe this is a Gary question, claiming that there's a loss of business because there's confusion based on the historic lettering, is that, is that a legal standing? It seems arbitrary.
It's very subjective, and I think you'll find, when the application comes before you, that he may not have pursued it as in-depth as he should have.
And I would say, that's ultimately the council's determination as to whether that meets your determination, if it meets the criteria that you were establishing for that or not.
Okay, so, Vice Mayor?
Was he, so he was painting over market, and it was no longer going to say market? Or he was painting over it, and then he was going to have market painted back on it?
We were told, and I think the facts are a little fishy, is that they had taken a stencil, and that it would go back up on the building. Before the day was out, we received a phone call that they'd like, the owner, that the tenant would like to pursue an application to have it removed, to consider having it removed.
For the council's consideration, this also leads to an option that staff has had a conversation about, about posting a notice of violation on the properties when we have a violation. We've heard loud and clear from the council some of the frustration that it appears that the town's not doing anything. One tool in our toolbag would be to post a notice on properties that are in violation, so that the public knows there's a pending action, because one of the things that is very frustrating to all of you is, we have due process. So, that requires notice, opportunity to resolve, and generally, that has a time period that runs. So, if there's some interest and support for us doing that, we will work on doing that, but we would, you know, that is something many communities do, so that the public is aware that there's an issue, and that the town is aware of it and doing something.
Sandra, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the photo that I submitted to you when I saw the painting over of the lettering. Do you recall seeing any stenciling around the lettering? I do not.
No, no.
I do not.
No, I don't know how they, they took the stencil.
If I could, without being an expert or defending what the paint, the stencil would be something that then they put on, they would put it back on the property, so it would be-
No, I understand what it was supposed to look like if they had done it.
Right, and our understanding-
It was more rhetorical than anything. Okay. But now we have to let the process play out, is what you're saying. Okay. No, that's all right, we appreciate due process, Steve. Any other questions about this item?
No.
Okay, so, to be continued. It's on an agenda for August for ZDRB, and we'll see what happens there. Okay.
I would receive feedback if you felt that we should proceed with an administrative penalty or not, or if, I don't know.
Thoughts on that?
If anyone wants to speak to that.
I think we should let the process go forward.
Is there, I'll phrase it this way, is there interest, majority interest of the council to proceed with an administrative penalty?
Based on what action?
If he's in violation of his conditions.
If he's in violation of his conditions, I, yes.
So, typically, we follow what process if somebody is found to be in violation? Like, we've had people that have played amplified music outside a business, and we've told them they're in violation, we haven't necessarily fined them, correct?
Right. Well, there-
We have a process.
Correct. An administrative penalty is for a serious violation, and there are eight factors that we look at. And one is the seriousness of it, the degree of culpability of the person who was, say, painted over the sign, the justification in allowing it to continue, whether it's subject to restoration or not, any good faith efforts to come into compliance pursuant to the terms of a notice of violation, any profits they receive, or any other factors as justice requires. So, we have to really sort of get into his head as to what he was thinking, and whether it was deliberate, whether it was accidental, whether he knew-
So, if we let the process play out right now, in three weeks, there will be a presentation to the ZDRB with an explanation from the property owner as to his claim as to why this has happened and why it should or shouldn't be changed.
And ultimately, you'll be the arbiter. I do want to remind the council that the council's policy direction to staff has been to educate and work on resolution rather than fining. So, we don't generally go with a fine-first citation approach. I'm just, that's something that we, we try to work on resolution rather than just fining.
Understood. I'm- And the applicant was probably well aware of that. I'm not sure that I am sensing three members of the council prepared to take administrative action right now. Gary?
Yeah, if I might, just in the context of a staff informational report.
We can't take it anyway. Okay, there you go.
All right.
Again, if you said something five minutes ago, we-
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, well, thank you. And Sandra, thank you for the report. I know I was the one that asked for it, and I appreciate you giving us some of the additional details about the process that we need to follow and have been following, so.
August 8th.
August 8th. Any other staff informational reports? No? Council meeting reports, comments, agenda, item requests. I'll very quickly, Napa County Flood Control today, approve the extension of the Rutherford Reach Assessment District. Napa Valley Transportation Authority meets tomorrow. Before I go into some other reports and announcements, are there any other meeting reports from council members? Specific meeting reports?
Meeting reports, board reports, if you can talk about. I have a trash board report.
Okay. Let's do that. Councilmember Mohler.
Okay. So, our last Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, it was annually in July, we always look at the rates, and we increased the rates based on CPI at the landfill 3%. And the effect that's going to have on the waste collection is going to be about a total of 1%. Actually, it's only 0.66%, but we've decided to round it up to 1 and use the other 0.34% to help fund the new mixing barn we're going to be building at the recycling center for grass yard and food waste composting. So, you will see that in your, the little tiny increases in your next billing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dorman, you had a report?
Yes, just, there's going to be a cannabis dispensary tour for the county and local jurisdictions two by two this Friday.
And you will be attending?
And I will be attending.
All right.
Bring it back to the table.
Thank you. So, other meeting reports or announcements? I have a list here, if no one else, I'll just get started. I attended the League of California City Mayors and Council Members Executive Forum in Monterey at the end of June. Session topics included earthquake preparedness, strategies for making housing more affordable, bringing broadband to communities, how social media is influencing policymaking, understanding the, quote, angry voter of 2016, and using technology in governance and economic development. I was also there as a member of the League's executive board. We spoke in opposition to the pending cell tower legislation, 649, and also took positions on how to implement the transportation funding that will be coming out with SB 1. And there were several bills for- out with SB one, and there were several bills for consideration related to water infrastructure, homelessness, affordable workforce housing, the Adult Use of Medical Marijuana Act, Prop sixty-four, and the trailer bill, and pensions stability policy, which is continuing to be a concern. The rate of return on that, CalPERS is expected to dip below seven percent in the coming years, which is going to have significant negative consequences for jurisdictions that cannot fund their liabilities. Thankfully, we have been very proactive in that regard. I want to thank everyone on behalf of the council for the very successful Fourth of July fireworks. Thank you to our, our team, as well as the team at the Veterans Home. I also want to recognize the Thomas Keller Restaurant Group, and in particular, the team at Bouchon Restaurant and Bakery for Bastille Day Celebration, and the annual Dunk Tank, into which I was dunked repeatedly, along with several members of the restaurant community, the proceeds from which we'll be going to the Yountville Elementary School. And also, I wanted to recognize that we have this weekend, Music in the Park, free concert starting at five PM, and bring your shade umbrellas and whatever else you might need to hang out in the warm weather, but that's been a wonderful success to have the, the free music in the park down at Veterans Memorial Park.
It's very shady out there.
It is now, very shady, good.
Yes.
Good. Also, since it has been a while since we've met, recognizing everyone, in particular Samantha, and our Arts Commission members for the underpass mural dedication ceremonies that we held a few weeks back, and also, I just wanted to announce or remind folks that the Napa Town and Country Fair is coming up, August eighth through the thirteenth, and there's some exciting new changes to what's going on at the, the Town and Country Fair and the music that's going to be happening there, so I'm putting my Napa Expo Board hat on for that announcement. With no other business, I see, Vice Mayor?
I would just like to remind people that Festival Napa Valley is happening, and there will be performances up at the Lincoln Theater, you may want to check them out.
Thank you very much for that, yes. Seeing no closed session, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to our next meeting scheduled for August first at six PM.
So moved.
Oh, you can't push a button, your button's gone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, good night.
Bye, Howard, I hope there is something interesting.
Bye, Howard.